All right. Good morning, everybody. Today is Tuesday, September 17th. This is the general meeting for the County of Lake Board of Supervisors. We will start our meeting with a moment of silence and then the pledge allegiance. And I believe that Supervisor Piska has a moment of silence for us.
I think it was on September 9th that John Berry passed away. And he has been just an incredible part of the community. It's been really touching to read the stories from his students and athletes on Lake County sports about how he's touched them and their families over the years. And he was also a fixture at Adam Springs Golf Course. I know he has a service coming up, I think in the next two weeks. But just want to take this moment of silence to really express the gratitude that we all feel for him and his presence throughout the decades here.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you very much for that. We are going to move on to consideration of extra items. Are there any extra items not appearing on the posted agenda? And anything from board members? And seeing none, let's go ahead and move on to our consent agenda, approval of the consent agenda. Are there any items board members wish to pull for further discussion? I plan on pulling item 5.4 for further discussion. And if there's nothing more, let's open it up for the public. Does anyone wish to pull an item from our consent agenda? Raise your hand if you are in Zoom or please come on up to the microphone if you are in the chamber. Seeing none of the above, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Move to approve consent agenda items 5.1 through 5.10 with the exception of 5.4.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any oppose? Motion carries. All right, we'll take up that item at a later time when it's convenient. Let's go ahead and move on to public input, our 9:02 a.m. item. This is for any public expression that is not related to an agenda item on our agenda. Please come on up. You'll have three minutes or again, raise your hand if you are in Zoom. Please come on up.
I'm Joan Moss. I've been around for a long time. Journalist. I attend Supervisor's meeting. I want to commend Carolyn, the front desk person over here. She has rescued so many of my lost and forgotten items. I'm getting older. I really appreciate Carolyn. I want to question the administration of the county because I expected a protest today or Friday. Bruno said, well, we will have a protest. That's the same thing as public input. I admit that, anyway. I think that you should follow through on what you say you're going to do and then explain when you don't do it. I want to know about the protest from Spring Valley. When is going to be completed? When there will be a continuation of the public hearing? I know little, I forget. I'm not a mathematician. But I think that they wanted to know where their money was going. I think that's an important question. Thank you. This is totally off the cuff. I love Lake County.
Thank you, Joan. Just real quick. Carolyn's amazing. Thank you for that comment. We spoke yesterday. Next week, I believe, is when the Spring Valley is planning to come back. We put it for a date certain. This week, we do have two items on the agenda. They are not protests, they're second readings of the ordinances that were passed last week. Just for clarification. And we talked about that yesterday. So I just wanted to re-clarify. And I see, we could talk afterwards during a break or during a lunch. I see no further hands up in the Zoom room or anyone getting up in the chamber. So let's go ahead and move on. Next is the highlight of the day, pet of the week.
Good morning, everybody. I'm Officer Murray with the Lake County Animal Care and Control. Today I have with me, or we have with us, O'Malley. He is a two-year-old Belgian Malinois. He is a very, very sweet boy. He listens very well. It makes it kind of seem he had some training before he came with us, but we can't be certain. He is just an overall very well-rounded dog. He has been with us for over 60 days at this point. So we are offering a discounted adoption rate for him. So if you would like to come down and meet O'Malley in person or any of our other dogs, you can meet us at 4949 Hellbush Drive or give us a call at 707-263-0278. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was his last move before he left. All right, 6:03, our 9:05 a.m. item. Consideration of ratification of a local emergency by the Lake County Sheriff, OES Director for the 2024 Boyle's Fire. And we have Sheriff Howe and Leo Sotole. Please come on up. I apologize if I didn't say her last name. I really wanted to say it in pure French, but I didn't know that was appropriate or not. Sotole.
Morning, Board. Rob Howe, Sheriff, and you've already introduced Leo Sotole, our Emergency Services Manager.
In the microphone, please.
Sorry. So we're here this morning to ask the Board for the consideration of a ratification of a proclamation of emergency that was, that I did last week for the Boyle's Fire. Boyle's Fire is primarily in the city of Clear Lake or entirely in the city of Clear Lake. However, it did impact some county functions, some school districts. May have some loss of revenue that would require a proclamation for them to try to reclaim. So we made that proclamation and again, asking for you to ratify that.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments? Please, Supervisor Green.
Just a real quick jurisdictional, on the original proclamation, it said affecting all jurisdictions in Lake County. And then the res over for us today, it's unclear. But I mean, the damage itself was kind of confined within the city of Clear Lake. So if we're going to have this emergency proc standing for a few months while whatever funding is being recouped or attempted to be recouped, you know, does it need to specify just which jurisdiction was most affected? Or is this going to continue to be a countywide local emergency for the duration of this resolution?
Okay. Thank you for the question. It's because it is impacting outside of the city of Clear Lake as described with the school districts, power outages, things beyond the actual damage of the fire. The whole jurisdiction of the county is fine. Thank you.
All right, thank you for that clarification. Let's go ahead and open it up for any public comment on this item. Anyone wish to speak on this item? See no one coming to the microphone and no hands up. So I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to ratify the local emergency proclamation by the Lake County Sheriff, OES Director for the 2024 Boyle's Fire and authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
Just for, Mr. Chair, for further clarification, the authorization for the signature would be the resolution. And so the suggestion here would be for the-
Oh, it says proclamation, so change it to resolution.
Well, the motion is correct. And just for further clarification of that motion, authorize the chair to sign the resolution and the resolution would be offered.
So, the resolution.
There you go. Thank you.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Green?
Aye.
Supervisor Piska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatia?
Aye. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
And move on to our 9:10 a.m. item. Presentation of proclamation designating the month of September 2024 as National Recovery Month in Lake County. Please come on up those involved in providing services and helping those in recovery.
Here, I was all worried. Is there going to be anybody here for this item? Just half the dang room and then some. So let's do this. And I love a good one-page resolution. The trick on this is smaller type, apparently. So let's give this a shot. Proclamation designating the month of September 2024 as National Recovery Month in Lake County. Whereas Recovery Month recognizes the strong and proud recovery community, the dedication of service providers and community members in Lake County who assist and support individuals from prevention services to recovery. And whereas Lake County Behavioral Health Services provided substance use disorder services to 559 participants. Hilltop Recovery Services provided 264 residential treatment beds. Redwood Community Services, Thule House, provided residential treatment services to 43 women and 17 children. Hilltop Recovery Services and Fran's House Sober Living Environment provided combined safe housing to 29 men and women and 10 children in the calendar year 2023. And whereas Lake County Behavioral Health Services provided mental health services to 2,034 individuals during the calendar year 2023. And whereas nationally, 24 million people in the United States experience a substance use disorder, while 9.5 million people experience both substance use disorder and mental health disorders. And whereas seven in 10 adults who have substance use disorders consider themselves recovering or in recovery. And two in three adults who have mental health disorders consider themselves recovering or in recovery. And whereas through promotion of Recovery Month, people from all walks of life are encouraged to become knowledgeable about what they can do to create a healthier tomorrow for themselves and others by helping to prevent these problems today. And whereas recovery is possible and treatment is effective, people in recovery can and do become gainfully employed, own homes and rejoin their families and their communities. And whereas the County of Lake Board of Supervisors and Lake County Behavioral Health Substance Use Disorder Services, Mental Health Services, Hilltop Recovery Services, Redwood Community Services, Safe RX, Hope Rising and Lake County Health Services urges all citizens, families, governmental agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, healthcare, education systems in Lake County to support efforts that will increase community awareness, understanding and action to address substance use disorder and mental health conditions in our community. Now therefore, the Board of Supervisors for the County of Lake join with the Lake County Department of Behavioral Health Services and that cast of thousands mentioned above and hereby proclaim that September 2024 is National Recovery Month right here in the County of Lake, passed and adopted this 17th day of September. And I'm so sure with this cast of stars, we have some additional comments. Director Jones?
Thank you Supervisor Green. Well done. What did I want to highlight? So what I wanted to highlight is thank you to everybody, first of all, that came out. I really appreciate each and every one of you. I don't know if probation was specifically called out. It was well-read but lengthy proclamation. But anyways, we're delighted and thrilled about our expansion in service to people who are involved in the criminal justice system or justice involved. And we ourselves are also working diligently. You've previously been informed about the organized delivery system under the waiver. So Amber has really championed that work forward. And we'll talk about some events we have this weekend. But I wanted to highlight that one of our partners, Community Behavioral Health, is here for our, we're expanding at our North Shore Clinic, which is in Lucerne. We're going to be offering, don't let me screw this up. So Narcotic Treatment Program Services, NTP, which is not, no, Matt? I did it. I did the thing. Someday I'm going to get it. It's Matt. Medication-assisted treatment, medications for addiction. So there's been a lot of stigma about like using medications to treat addiction. But fortunately, those times are falling behind us. And so we know medications are really effective at treating and helping people recover. And I'm also just delighted, like I'm the luckiest person in the world because of where I get to work and who I get to work with. But we're, we're a very strong recovery community in-house in our department. We actually, now I have to, I'm saying it out loud, so I'm really committing to it. We're, we next year at the Department of Healthcare Services Integrated Care Conference are going to hopefully be able to talk about being a felon-friendly employer. And because of the intersection, it's true. And because of the intersection of substances and behavioral health issues with criminal justice, and we could talk, teach classes about that, right? But those are, those are our people. And so we are a felon-friendly employer. And we're proud of it because people with a history of criminal justice have something important and great to give back. So it's just a very exciting time in behavioral health to have a lot of the stigma that really held us back from being our best selves removed. And so I do want to hand it off to Amber to talk more about our events that are coming up and any other highlights. No pressure.
Thank you. Good morning. Thank you Chairman Sabatia and Supervisors for accepting and acknowledging this proclamation to clear in September as Recovery Month. We face and we see a lot of challenges in our community on a daily basis regarding individuals who struggle with mental health and substance use disorders. It's pretty glaring and visible. And with that, we are able to look and see what our barriers and our gaps are and to see where work needs to be done. Although heartbreaking, we need to see those things so that we can be better as a community. Just as importantly though, what Recovery Month is about is to also celebrate the successes of those who have struggled and overcome those struggles and those barriers and continue to be champions and leaders in the community and inspire others. The group you see here is a beautiful, amazing group, but it's only just a very small slice of the recovery community. What you didn't hear in this proclamation either are tribal entities. So there are so many beautiful gems of recovery services and recovery communities from tribal communities to religious sectors to 12 help support groups. Everybody does a very beautiful and special part in the community. Because as we know, not everybody identifies with just one way to recover. So I, I'm really proud to be a part of the Lake County community and know just how many people do such beautiful work here. Lake County Behavioral Health Services is working really hard to expand services for the community and what eligibility looks like. Hilltop Recovery Services, Redwood Community Services, they are expanding the type of services that they provide to the community. Our tribal groups and entities also do really beautiful recovery work and events out in the community. I see it all the time. And so do, you know, other religious and 12 help sectors. Well, I just lost the other things that I wanted to say. But moving on, this weekend, there is going to be a community event. It's called Recovery Happens. It's on Saturday from 10 to 2 at Austin Park. Come on out. It's a beautiful event. It's a really diverse group of people who come out and share their recovery and are visible in the community. We are going to have a recovery walk and a banner contest. So if you got a little competitive side to you, I encourage you to come on out. We're going to have some trophies for first, second and third place winners for our banner contest. We're going to have a free, free lunch for the community, anybody who shows up. And we're going to have some really great inspiring speakers and different resource booths for you to come and check out. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Lori Carter Runyon, Executive Director of Hilltop Recovery Services. I'm also in recovery. My clean date is July 31, 1997. I'm also in the criminal justice, or was a long time ago. So it is true. I mean, business owners, own homes, everything else. And now I employ quite a few people. So I want to say that Recovery Happens has a lot of value and meaning to me. But what has gone on in the last year has been amazing for our recovery support group. And so I'm thankful for everyone that's here. This is the best, and I've been around for years. I mean, long before you guys were sitting up there, I was fighting battles in this place. And this is the best team at Lake County Behavioral Health that we've had. And I want to honor that right now because it's very important. It's been amazing. And I also want to acknowledge Community Behavioral Health. And John in the red back there, so if anybody didn't know who he was, has, is a part of a company that allows us to provide mental health services. And through COVID and different things, I have to tell you, and now coming out of it, it is our savior. Hilltop was working with them, you know, as Lake County Behavioral Health started to as well. It's what has connected us to mental health services for our people who are in residential treatment. We've had, it's been a lifesaver and it's changed things. Now that they're bringing MAT, which the difference is, is it doesn't have methadone. That's the big difference on the MAT. Is, is really a necessary asset because we're fighting. I mean, it's mandated. Things that have happened in the years since I started. Hilltop, we had issues for reasons. We were working with mental health. We were working with relapse. We were doing all these things that were supposedly beyond our scope. Now they're best practices. Everything we were doing before that we were being beat up for is what is happening now and it's best practices. And it's brought us together. It's bringing the mental health teams together. It's bringing other resources together. It's bringing us perinatal and getting to work together. And, and, and I feel that that's starting to happen again. I mean, we used to do IMD, whatever it is. No, 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 no. The team meetings, yes, the IMDT. We have way too many acronyms in this. Right, way too many acronyms. We used to do it with all the law enforcement, all the groups together in the meetings. And I'm hoping that that's going to start happening more again soon, getting that back. But this is the best I've seen for so long. You know, and even for me, recovery has changed. I mean, it was all about abstinence when I started because that's what I needed. The reality is, is I mean, I have graduates who have businesses, attorneys, firefighters. It's amazing, you know, what they do. Some of them are able to, you know, they, they might drink occasionally now. The recovery is not the same. It doesn't have to be abstinence. It's harm reduction. It is, you know, it is the MAT, which is so important. It's integrating the mental health. It is, you know, understanding that what was right for me might not be, work for somebody else. And that we have to be open to all forms of treatment and recovery. and that we have to be open to all forms of treatment and recovery. So again, I now have 27 years in recovery, a few more years. When I hit 60, I'll have 30. So, you know, halfway there. So, and that's my plan. And I, and I plan on still being a part of a great, growing team. And I thank you. And please join us. I get to make hot dogs every year. So it's not a fabulous lunch, but it's simple for me, since I have to be the cook. And please join us on, on Saturday to see all, I mean, see so many of us together. Thank
Supes have any comments? Oh, we have more people.
Sorry, one last thing. Can I push out?
Microphone, please.
Hi. I just wanted to remind everybody that we will, in partnership with Community Behavioral Health, today from 11:00 to 2:00 p.m. at Le Vos de la Esperanza, which is on Lake Shore Drive. It's across from Patriot Gas and by Main Street Grill. We're handing out just care packages, kind of supplies. John bought a bunch of stuff and food. So we're, he just, sleeping bags, tents. So we just have personal hygiene. So we just have people who really want to give back to our community. So come just hang out with us and get some free stuff.
Free stuff. I can only add, your words speak to me. And I grew up where, yes, it was abstinence and abstinence only and just say no. And that didn't work out so well for my generation growing up. And, and I've seen, you know, people lost to various ailments and have you. I know recovery is not a light switch. You don't just turn it on and turn it off. And I know there are spectrums of conduct. And I stand here as one of the biggest typicates in the room, not being compliant in any way, but also having a, a real-life experience, you know? You know, I stay away from the things that I believe are most dangerous. And I encourage other people to stay away from those things. And I'm a little more tolerant on other things. And I, and I think that speaks to our community as well, you know? Don't look at these people as a bunch of just, you know, just say no people, abstinent. They have lived real-life experiences. They know the struggles. And they are here very much to be supportive and to encourage you on your next steps. It is a one-day-at-a-time thing. You'll have successes and you'll have failures along the way. But look at this great team before you know that there are hundreds of people that are not in this room today that also work on this in Lake County. And it's just a very inspiring time. One, because it has changed so much from just 40 years ago, when it was just a mess. And to see the funding and the nuance and the, and the real emphasis on harm reduction, that speaks to me. Supes?
One more, please.
Oh, okay. My name is Raven Shepherd, and I hold a substance abuse licensure and social work ASW. And so I practice with co-occurring, I do co-occurring work. And thanks to the opportunity that I've been given by Lake County Behavioral Health, I'm able to go out to the tribes and go provide services, assessments and individual services and group, not group services yet, but that's in the works. But we're able to go out there through Lake County Behavioral Health and provide services. So that's really new. I really appreciate the team that I work on. I really feel like we're collaborative and we get a lot of work done. So thank you.
So I just want to add one thing. Number one, it's Gulf, not Patriot. It changes every couple of years. But yes, looking forward to Le Vos offering that and looking forward to this Saturday as well. Appreciate all the work that happens. I'm gonna say something strange. The Nazarene Church in Clear Lake always has a sign, and the young lady who puts the sign up is always very creative. And it's something I've been thinking in what you're saying today, where she says, "Don't judge because people sin differently than you." We all take part in something that we probably shouldn't be doing, whether that's speeding in the car this morning, whether that's drinking too much coffee on Tuesdays, or, or other things. And I just think that, that, that's the mantra that I'm seeing from Behavioral Health and all the partners here, that we're, we're just here to help. How you got there is not too much of the, I mean, it helps to figure out how to help, but it's not something that we're going to decide, no, we can't help you because this is how you got here. We're here to help everybody to try to lead them into a better quality of life. I have seen the difference. I think that we've mentioned already a couple of things. The ODS system is gonna increase and enhance the availability and how people can access these services. And I'm hearing more and more and more of what's coming up down the pike and really appreciate what I'm seeing from not just Behavioral Health, probation, and all of the above partners that are here and not here today as well. So it's hard. It's one of, it's, it is not simple mathematics where you just take two plus two and it equals four. There is a lot of work that goes into helping people reorient themselves to a different direction, especially if that direction has been hung on to for such a long time. So appreciate the hard work that you do and thank you for everything.
So I'll just keep it short, but I just wanted to say that it takes a lot to do this work. There's so many people that are in need of it. They recidivate. The other thing is that a lot of, many of you or most of you have been through it before. So you're able to go down into that, you know, that pit and help them out of it. They do, we do that with veterans as well. So that's the only type of way you can do it, you know? So I appreciate all of you. I know that at times I get calls from some of you so we can help on other ends, the collaboration with tribes and whatnot. That is a wonderful thing because there's no way we can do this alone when just one silo. So I appreciate the work you do.
I just want to say thank you so much. You know, we all know that in recovery, it's not until the individual asks for it that we need to be able to just help them guide through that. I think that's the most important thing. Everyone needs to be, you know, you guys set up all of the, you know, programs, different opportunities. But when the individuals that we all know are family members, friends, whatever, are prepared to ask for it, that's the hardest thing for them to do. And having these resources that you guys all have in place are just so important. So I just want to say thank you very much because we've all been through it, either ourselves or family members, and like I said, or friends. And when they ask for that help, having the resources you guys have put together, collaborate with, are the most important things because it is a journey. But it doesn't happen until that individual asks for it because you can't force recovery on anyone. Doesn't work. So thank you very much. Greatly appreciate the work that's done in all of our communities. Thank you.
It's your time.
Public comment?
Was there another comment?
Public comment. Did you open for public?
Another comment?
I don't remember.
Is Whit looking?
Okay, ready? Here we go.
Okay.
Wait, I didn't get you. Hold on.
Got it. Yes, thank you.
Did you really?
Yeah.
All right, our next timed item is not until 10:00, so we're gonna move on to some untimed items. And it looks like a, the special districts team came in, so let's go ahead and take up those items. We're gonna start off with item 7.3, Sitting as the Kelseyville County Water Works District Number Three Board of Directors, A. Consideration of Second Reading of an Ordinance Increasing Sewer Use Charges for Kelseyville County Water Works District Number Three, and B. Consideration of Second Reading of an Ordinance Amending Section 1.1 of Ordinance Number 2652, Increasing the Water Charges and Fees for Kelseyville County Water Works District Number Three. I'm gonna pass it on to Director Borre. Good morning.
Good morning, Board and staff. These items, this item is returning to you from the first reading last week, where we went into the detailed information about the Prop 218 process. So this is just the second reading and the vote on it. So does anybody have any questions or comments?
Seeing none at this moment. Let's go ahead and pass this on to the public. Anyone wish to speak on this item? Raise your hand in Zoom or come on up to the microphone. Seeing none in either. Let's go ahead and bring it back. Just, I do have a quick question. Maybe it's a 218 process for, for future reasons. Second readings are usually much easier, as we just noticed. There's no comments from the board, no comments from the public. Is it possible to put these into the consent agenda in the future? For example, we're gonna be talking about Spring Valley again, and there may be some others. Is that a possibility? Or is it a 218 thing?
I don't, I don't know if it's an ordinance issue, or we could put it in consent, I would think. Yeah.
Okay. Just to save you some time from having to come to the board meeting in case that that's the way it works. Other than that, looking, entertain the motion.
I'll offer the ordinance, increasing sewer use charges for Kelseyville County Water Works District Number Three.
Ordinance has been offered.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Green?
Aye.
Supervisor Pisca?
Yes.
Supervisor Spatia?
Aye.
And B. Offer the ordinance amending Section 1.1 of Ordinance Number 2652, Increasing the Water Charges and Fees for Kelseyville County Water Works District Number Three.
Ordinance has been offered.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Green?
Aye.
Supervisor Pisca?
Yes.
And Supervisor Spatia?
Aye.
All right. Thank you much. Let's move on to 7.4, Sitting as the Lake County Sanitation District Board of Directors, Consideration of Second Reading of an Ordinance Amending Sewer Use Ordinance Appendix A of the Lake County Ordinance Code, Increasing Sewer Use Fees for the Northwest Regional Sewer System. Director Borre.
So again, this item was heard last, last week with the Prop 218 process. And we did not receive enough protests, so it is continued on to the second reading. And so does anybody have any questions about the North Lake Port Sewer?
I don't have any questions, but I do want to admit that we do not have a public comment that I know I received in my email. I think it may have been sent to all of Board members, just requesting not to approve the sewer rates. Just wanted to at least put that out there for public record. And seeing, Supervisor Green, did you have a?
I think I received it. I don't remember that it was specific to a Northwest Treatment Plan or a Kelseyville. It was just generically against rate increases. So appreciate that.
Thank you for the clarification in case that was incorrect. Let's go ahead and open up for public comment on this item. Seeing none, bringing it back to the board for action.
For the ordinance?
Ordinance has been offered.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
No.
Supervisor Green?
Aye.
Supervisor Pisca?
Yes.
And Supervisor Spatia?
Okay. And that completes our special districts.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. If CAO Parker is ready, we'll go ahead and take the addendum 7.5.
More than ready to punt. So we received a, a request last Friday for this letter of support.
And if you don't mind, I'm gonna interrupt just so I can read the item.
Oh, I'm sorry, sir.
I just wanted to check and make sure you were ready. Consideration and Discussion of a Letter of Support for the Golden State Connect Authority Application for the National Telecommunications and Information Administration Digital Equity Competitive Grant Program, CAO Parker.
Thank you, sir. We received a request last Friday from Barbara Hayes, RCRC. As you know, we are a member of the Golden State Connect Authority. They have decided to submit a competitive application to help provide resources to low-income families to access digital data and internet. And that's, it goes much more complex than that and technical, but I won't go into that. It's a simple letter of request that will be part of all counties in the state of California with this request.
Or at, at least the 40.
The 40, at least 40. But I think they've, they've gotten one.
Others will probably be doing the same outside of RCRC. Okay, gotcha. Thank you. Just real quick, we do have a correction letter attached. The only thing that changed was the recipient of the letter at the top of the letter. No other changes were made to the document?
No other changes were made.
Okay. Just wanted to make certain that was the case. And any comments or questions from Board members? Seeing none. Let's open it up for public comment. No hands in Zoom, no movement in the chamber. Bringing it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to provide a letter of support for the Golden State Connect Authority's Digital Equity Competitive Grant Program application with the correction.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. Thank you for adding that to the agenda, an important part of what we're doing. Let's see here. We're not quite at 10:00. It was requested for 5.4 to wait till 11:00, so let's go ahead and do our calendars.
Mr. Chair.
CAO Parker has a better idea?
I have a recommendation, sir. Do you wish to address 7.2 as far as continuing it to the 24th?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Let me see if I got a response. I was waiting to see if there was a response. I have not received one. But I, I can open it up to see how the board feels about it, too. So 7.2, Consideration of Change Order Number Three, Middletown Use Path Improvements Project, State Project Number ATPL 5914102, Bid Number 2205, for an increase of $247,258.81, an amended contract amount of $1,408,959.29. So I have emailed Director March. I will admit my email was very late. It was about 8:45 a.m. this morning. I completely, I tried going to speak with him and he wasn't available yesterday and forgot to follow up with the email. There has been discussion at the ARPA Committee, but the ARPA Committee's recommendations have not been brought yet to the board. This does utilize ARPA dollars, and the correct process should be us approving the ARPA disbursement and then prove, looking to consider this. And that can be moved to next week since the ARPA recommendations are coming with the final budget. And this would follow that conversation as well on the 24th. And just kind of checking in with the board, that seems to make sense to do it in that way. I do have a question regarding it because the request for ARPA was 192, and the request here is 247. So hopefully we can get that response as well before next week. Any Board Member? Supervisor Simon?
Obviously, in, in my district, I think it is done. But yeah, I think we should follow the proper protocols, get the approvals completed before it comes back to the board for final approval on this amendment. So greatly appreciated. Appreciate the work that's being done over there, too, or completion. So thank you very much.
Okay. Any other comment or question? Supervisor Green, you look like you have-
Well, you would need a fresh ARPA Committee Review Approval for a change order. It seems like we're on change order number three now, the original.
Now, I believe this has been in the works for a while. And what was requested was, again, it's not an exact total number, but the number requested was based on the change order that was coming up. It could be that the rest is coming from different sources, as there have been multiple sources, ATP and other things that have provided funds throughout the life of this project. So I just was looking for that clarification. I just wanted to make sure that the ARPA amount was going to fulfill the needs. ARPA has met and recommendations are coming. Okay. Let's open it up for public comment. We have a hand up from Mr. Stephen Carter, Jr.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to clarify that the ARPA will be coming on the 24th. And the, the original request was 192, but then there was a second section of the request. So what was approved and will be hopefully being approved by the board is 250. So where you were asking if there was a little bit of leeway, there is, if approved, with what we're bringing forward.
Appreciate the clarification on that. Okay. And open it up for public comment. Because that was not public comment. And seeing no hands in Zoom and no movement in the chamber, we'll bring it back. And we will see this item and continue at 2:924 at our next regular meeting. Thank you for your recommendation. Now, we still have time, so let's go ahead and do our weekly calendars. And let's start with Supervisor Green.
Can I do that? Okay. Looks like we should have a Lakeport Shelter Zoom tomorrow morning. Looks like IFT got canceled. IC continuing with CARE on Thursday, but I don't know if that's right. 23rd on Monday, I'll have Scotts Valley Community Advisory Council and a meeting with CAO Parker, and that's about it.
All right. Thank you very much. Are you able to do that with your-
Yep, we got it. Yep, we got it.
Perfect. Supervisor Simon.
Figuring it out. So, tomorrow, we have LAFCO in Ava in, well, morning and afternoon, at least in the city of Clearlake, I think, is where it's at. On Friday, have, looks like I have a Work, whoops, Workforce Alliance and North Bay Governing Board Meeting. Have on my calendar, I'll double-check, but I think I'm going to do that here in the Lakeport Courthouse. I will let you know, I was unable to attend the RRA meeting yesterday. Get a follow-up, I think. I think Terry Logston stood in place for me. I think that's how we work with the alternates, as far as I know. So, that was a message I had gotten, so I greatly appreciate that. And then, we'll be, so I won't be doing the call on Friday with Matthew because I've got the Work Board Alliance North Bay. So, go ahead and follow up with coming back on Monday, or checking in on Monday on the agenda, and then Tuesday, back here for the board. If I need to, I'll check in on Monday. I'll send someone an email. Thank you.
Perfect. Supervisor Pisca?
So, last week, I was at Insonoma for the after-the-fire conference, the Thursday and Friday, which I go to that every year, but this year was, the Maui delegation was hosted, and it was, it was a really intense couple of days. We have a lot more in common than I had actually thought when we sat down and had some really intense conversations. So, I'm always really grateful to Jennifer Rae Thompson for putting that event on. It's a really important event to come from all over the West and across the oceans now. And then, Sunday was the Dia de la Independencia in Kelseyville, which I think it was the sixth anniversary of that. Really wonderful event. Kelseyville Business Association's working hard this time of year with all the festivals. And I also did not make the Risk Reduction Authority meeting yesterday. And then, tonight, I'm going to be heading to Ronar Park for the rest of the week for RCRC. I don't think that I'm going to make the Workforce Alliance Board Meeting, so hopefully, there's a quorum.
They'll figure out quorum.
Figure it out.
We got one representative from Lake County. That'll be it, so I'll do that.
Yeah. And then, I'm going to make that football game Friday night against Kelseyville in Middletown. And then, Tuesday, or I'm sorry, Monday, I just have my meeting with CAO Parker, and then back on Tuesday.
All right. Thank you. Vice Chair Crandall.
All right. So, after the meeting, be heading down to Ronar Park as well for the annual RCRC meeting. Have been collaborating with the help of, you know, Carolyn, Susan, staff. Supervisor Pisca, we've been putting together a basket. I know going to get more items today. We got a lot going for us. Yeah, since we have a little time, I'll just talk about what we're giving out. I'll let you announce what we're giving because I didn't get a chance to see it just yet. But I do know, we have, so we have a wine barrel that I got from Supervisor Pisca, and we're going to put all the items in there. And one of them is donated bass tour by Scott DeLeon. We have a basket of pears, and that's from, where's that from?
I picked them in Kelseyville over the weekend.
I have three big, three big obsidian rocks that I'm going to put in the wine barrel as well. I also have a carved wine barrel that's going to be a coffee table, and it's got a bass, a hitch, it's got the lake on it, and it's going to say Lake County, California on it, and I'll have a better picture of it next week. I have to pick it up on the way down. I also got one of those radios. I don't know if you've seen them. Rick Mayo makes these radios out of ammo cans for veterans, and so, I bought one of those, and I'm going to donate it to that as well. We didn't get a lot of the restaurant stuff that we did last year, but I'm making up for these carved things and these other deals. And so, we've got a basket from Twin Pine. That's going to, it's customary. Usually, every year, they do like a room and some play and, you know, dinner. Robinson Rancheria does the same. Yeah, I think that's most of it. We have a bike tour as well, or?
Yeah. So, the pears are organic Combs' Pears from Miley Field, and I did go pick them over the weekend. Then, we have a e-bike tour at Six Sigma from Canokte Bikes, and also wine tasting and charcuterie.
Yeah.
Provided by the ranch. And then, two bottles of their wine, too.
Yeah. So, we have quite a bit to give out. We're hoping to break our last year's amount that we received. I think, what I've noticed is the group in the auctions, what they see is better. When they see a basket just kind of sitting there with stuff, but when they see these carved, yeah, they get like really excited. And I know Rex, one of the guys from Humboldt, usually has some big monstroses like carving that he gets right here in Lakeport. I've had to pick it up for him before, so. So, yeah, I just figured we'd kind of go that route this year, and hopefully, we'll see how much we get. And it's always a good fun auction to have. A lot of people are there. So, yeah, we'll be at that this week. We have a couple of things going 18th and 19th throughout the days. We, you know, have these seminars and these different folks. I think Senator McGuire is going to be there talking as well. I think that's tomorrow. Yeah, that's tomorrow at about noon, 11:00 or noon, or 1:00, one of the three. But I know he's going to be there, so we'll be able to, you know, engage in that. And then, we have our board meeting Friday. Going to try to zoom in to the West Region Town Hall, which is Wednesday night. I'm not sure if I'll be able to, but I'll do my best to get on. I know it's a pretty contentious discussion there. But at the same time, I, these are once a year, I have to be added, the representative of them. So, that, so I'll be there for that. Saturday, Native American California Indian Days, Robinson Rancheria. That is from, let's see. That's from 10:00 to 5:00. I know that, I think you all have an event as well.
Yeah, we're doing ours, too.
It's always, it's always because people are going back and forth, dancing at both events, so they got to go across the lake. I'll also be attending the Frank Hodge Memorial. If you remember, a couple, three or four weeks back, I did, about a month ago, did a moment of silence for Frank Hodge out of Upper Lake. So, they're having his memorial, and it's going to be at 17247 Elk Mountain Road, Upper Lake, California, from 11:00 to 8:00 p.m. There's going to be a horseshoe tournament, and it's basically a potluck and stuff like that as well. So, they want to honor him by one of his favorite things to do, and that's a horseshoe tournament. So, if you want to get out there, go to that address. I know it's posted out on Facebook and all of that, but I just wanted to mention it. And so, yeah, I'll be going to that. So, I don't know if I'll be able to go across the lake to the recovery. That's in Clearlake, right? Yeah. So, I'll be missing that, but be bouncing back from wherever I can on these. I got to make sure I make this, this classic here, the Frank Hodge classic, they say. So, and then, Monday, CAO Parker and I will have a call about the agenda for next Tuesday, and then, I have a meeting in Clearlake Oaks with folks that are at Lake Village Estates in, yeah, Clearlake Oaks. I've been having a standing meeting with them every two weeks, if not at their establishment, but at the Earth Meeting, so that's what I have.
All right. I want a picture of that coffee table. That sounds intriguing.
Yeah, I'm going to make sure I have a good picture of it and put it up during the next calendar or something like that because it's going to be pretty cool to see.
And next time Rex picks up a Lake County item, can we make sure it says "Made in Lake County"?
Yeah, I know.
Burn it in there.
Yeah, get it burnt.
Get it etched in there so that people recognize. Let's see here. I want to go back a little bit. Haven't really spoken thoroughly about some of the past activities that I've done, and just wanted to at least alert the board as to CSAC's actions. We had three ballot measures, somewhat contentious within the group to make decisions on. One of them was Prop 5. Prop 5 is, I believe, led by our Assembly Member Cecilia Aguirre Curry, and has been hearing a lot of struggles from communities in passing tax measures, more specifically, specific tax measures, not general tax measures, which require a 2/3 voter approval at this moment. This would change so that local bonds and affordable housing and public infrastructure taxes would go down to the 55% voter approval, similar to what schools are doing right now. There was a yes vote to throw CSAC support behind that. But again, contentious, not an easy up and down vote.
They voted yes?
Yes. So, they.
RCRC lost, or it was a no.
Yeah, I could probably tell you which counties CSAC matched the ones from RCRC. That would have said no.
Probably closest vote in a while, though.
Yeah. And then, we also looked at Prop 35. There are some funds that are specific to help out our Medi-Cal healthcare services in the way that the budget was done. And in fact, CSAC was highly involved in that, was to allow for a certain sum of money, I think it was like $100 million, to be much more flexible for the governor to use in different areas. Prop 35 is actually supported by both the Democratic and Republican Party. It's one of those ones that seems to have a lot of mutual support. Would fix what those funds would be utilized for, not giving the governor the flexibility. Because CSAC worked really hard to try and get that flexibility, CSAC felt that they would be opposing themselves if we voted yes or no on this. So, it was actually a no, it's not a no vote, but it's a no position. Thank you very much. So, CSAC took no position on that. Prop 36 was definitely, probably the most contentious one as this would allow for felony charges and increased sentence for certain drug and theft crimes. This would alter, not erase, but alter Prop 47. And that also passed and got support from CSAC, and from what I understand, RCRC.
Unanimous, RCRC.
That was not unanimous, as CSAC. So, I just wanted to at least let you know where the weight of CSAC is going on some of these ballot measures as we continue to discuss with our constituents when we're asked questions about what these ballot measures do and where we go with that. In fact, on the Judge's Breakfast, that happens on Thursdays at 7:00 a.m., I believe it's September 27th. Anita Grant, who has historically been invited to let people know about the ballot measures on the upcoming ballot in November, she has been invited to talk about all the propositions that will be on the ballot to those that attend the Judge's Breakfast, so looking forward to that as well. Then, I do want to go over, just, I did meet with, I think I spoke to you guys about this. Just wanted to let you know, I've been keeping CAO Parker apprised of the conversation. I met with a group from CSAC, which is Supervisor Kent Bose from Calusa, Supervisor Gary Bradford from Yuba, and Supervisor Lucas Fredericks from Yolo. Trying to get a supervisor from Sutter County, have not yet identified, working with their Economic Development Director to find the right person. But we all met together with the leadership of Yuba Community College District. We shared our vacancy lists. Both, I received some information from the hospitals. I had something from RHR. They had all their HR stuff as well to talk about how can we create new pipelines to help get our staff filled so we can provide services. They get students, they get enrollment, we get staff, we get better services to our constituents. What we talked about is eventually, once they have ideas and programs that they want to talk to us about, that we would connect them with our CAOs and our HR departments because we're just looking to introduce the conversation, and we would like the experts to be involved in what's best that could work to get us in the right place. So, exciting, and it was very welcoming conversation, and I think that everybody left excited about the prospects. Let me go over my calendar now. I won't say anything about today's meeting, but I will be going by the lack. The Local Assistance Center that's happening over in the Youth Center in the city of Clearlake to help those who have either had damage, lost homes, or were impacted by the Boils Fire. And appreciate all of the agencies that are at the Local Assistance Center, which is a lot of our departments as well and other outside agencies, and just appreciate all the services that are helping to connect the people in need. And so, I'll be passing by there at the end of the day. Tomorrow, pretty packed day. There's a Lakeport Shelter update happening early at 8:30, or actually, it looks like it starts at 9:00. LAFCO is happening at 9:30. Glad I'm no longer the Chair of LAFCO because I have to jump out. If our meeting is not over yet at 11:00, my NACO Health Steering Committee is meeting. Typically, it would be at 12:00, which would be better. But meeting with that group, and then also joining the NACO Arts and Culture Committee that I've gotten myself involved with. There is a Vet Connect happening in the city of Clearlake at the American Legion. Starts at 10:00, I believe, 10:00 to 4:30. And so, those that are veterans who want to connect with other veterans or connect with services, please come on down. The Vet Connect is always a well-attended, lots of booths and lots of services being offered, so please come on down there, and I'll go ahead and pass through. AVA will also be happening later on that day in the city of Clearlake as well. Thursday, starting off the day with Judge's Breakfast. Looking forward to our EMCC and IFT meeting as there is a chance that we will be passing the new ambulance ordinance, which will then come to the Board of Supervisors, meeting with a bunch of different continuum of care items as well, from grant applications to our extra. We are having a special meeting that day on Thursday to catch up on a few things, to talk about some grant opportunities as well. Friday so far, and it looks like Thursday, I'm concluding my day with a city council meeting. Friday looks pretty clear to me. I am meeting with some constituents, looking forward to those conversations. Obviously, recovery happens from 10:00 to 2:00 on Saturday in Austin Park. And then, on the following week, the only thing I have here other than doing some peg work is meeting with our CAO, but our CAO will not be here on Monday, so we'll all be meeting with Stephen Carter, most likely, on that day as we prepare for our board meeting on Tuesday, the 24th. And that concludes our calendars, which is perfect timing because it is 10:01, and we will continue on with our timed items. 6.5, 10:00 a.m. Hearing. Consideration of Request for Post Abatement Hearing on Account and Proposed Assessment of Abatement. 6657 Chevyat Road, Lucerne, California. I think I said that right. APN Number 034352-03. And Director Turner, good morning to you and your team.
Good morning. Getting comfy because we're going to be here for a little while today.
Oh, County Council, Mr. Guentamano.
Yes, just briefly, Mr. Chair, your board may want to consider swearing in the witnesses or for any witnesses who may be testifying.
Let's get the technology ready first so that we can, I don't want to distract from the work being done to get the presentation up. Hard to do that with a right hand up at the same time. It's weird, it's not popping up as an option. It looks like it's on PowerPoint. Oh, that Zoom is not. Johanna saves the day.
Thank you. Mariaa Turner, Director of Community Development. And after we get sworn in, I'll pass it over to Code Enforcement Manager.
So, those of you that are in the room or in Zoom, if you're in Zoom, please raise your hand so we can go ahead and unmute you for those that wish to provide testimony to this specific item, item 6.5.
All right. With your right hand raised, do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do.
All right.
Good morning. My name is Marcus Beltrama. I'm the manager for the Code Enforcement Division for Lake County. Today, we're doing a lean hearing for 6657 Chevyat Road, Lucerne, California. Okay. Please. All right. As always, we provide a map of the area. Whoops. There we go. I do want to provide a little context. This property here is, whoa, it's doing it again. So, this property here and the lean hearing we'll hear in the next 15 minutes, really, it's two parcels. the lien hearing, chose to demolish that property, or the structure on that property. And this one here is also another demolition that we believe that needed to happen there. So two of the three problem properties in this area have been, I think, permanently resolved, the other one is in a state where it's been secured. So hopefully, we've eliminated or resolved the issues that are occurring in this area of Lucerne. The property owner on record is Kathleen Capitan, she is deceased. The property was being inhabited by a daughter. It's a R1 zoning property, it is a vacant lot. So on the left, we will get to that, it's on a separate parcel, the structure's on a separate parcel. Right now, we're focused on the right, where the debris and the rubbish is just laying on the vacant lot. Here's a closer-up picture, it's just miscellaneous debris that's just been dumped there, or either stripped from the structure next door, and just laid on the ground there. We cited several sections of the Chapter 13 for existence of garbage and rubbish, unsightly appearance, and then violation of open and outdoor storage. We had hired a contractor, they came in, they cleaned it up, they put the stuff into the dumpster, removed it from the property, and disposed of it properly. As you can see here, this is what the lot looks like after the abatement. 3.29 tons of material were disposed of, were collected and gathered and disposed of from this parcel. The cost of the abatement was $2,452.53, contractor's cost was $1,741.83, administration fees amounted to $710.70. So the staff is recommending the board approve a lien in the amount of $2,452.53, and direct staff to record a lien against the property.
Apparently, it's not showing.
Oh. I have it on Zoom. It's not on, no, you're right, it's not moving forward the slides.
So how would you like me to proceed? Is this a Sam issue?
No, I think it's sharing, maybe we chose the wrong screen to share, or what you're moving is not, I don't know. Let's try it again, and we'll just go through the slides, maybe five seconds each, because, again, the information you've provided through the presentation is on the memo and within all of the attachments. I don't believe you're providing any new information currently. So I think that if we just, if we have the capability of just kind of going through the slides fairly quickly, I think that would be okay, because then it would be on record, people can pause the video if they want to look at it. But again, that information is not new. And so I do see that exact screen, so I'd say just click on the next slides and not move, there you go. Yep, please.
We're at the end.
If you can go through each one?
I understand.
Yeah. All right. Thank you for doing that, and, yeah, yeah.
All right, man, I guess that concludes our presentation.
We will, we will see how the next one goes. All right. Thank you very much for all of that. Any comments or questions? Supervisor Green?
Just super quick, I see 1, 2, 3, no notices, and then last and final notice. Understandable in the fact the property owner was deceased, but because the property owner was deceased, I'm kind of wondering about the three, a year-plus sending out notices, and then the last and final notice after the property inspection warrant was obtained. When did, when did we become aware that the property owner was deceased?
During the, early on in the process, when we made contact with the occupant of the property.
Okay, so I guess one question, not a criticism per se, and not to, you know, to the issue of recording the lien, that's one thing, but it didn't strike me as the most efficient use of resources. If you had earlier knowledge of that, you probably could have skipped one or two notices, or...
So as we go through the process, we had staff turnover, we had some issues, and as we go through our processes, and we get to the abatement process, there's a review process where we actually go through to the abatement. And during that review process, we caught some issues within the prior notices, so we felt that it was in, acting in good faith and trying to do things the proper way, we decided to reissue the last notice to make sure we were covering our basis, to make sure we had a defensible notice for the abatement. So that's what happened there, is that the first two notices, we just saw some issues that we thought didn't provide for the cleanest abatement, and therefore, we had to restart the process, issue a new notice that covered all the bases. So we believe our system and our internal checks made sure that this procedure was done properly and in a clean manner, so that way, it could be defensible against any contest.
Is it fair to say that same process attended the next item as well?
Yeah, so the, yes, because even though there are two separate parcels, it was really one abatement.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the question. So I just, gonna bring this up for this one, I won't bring it up for the rest, and I know that there's cleanup being done from prior history of code enforcement, so I can't speak to today, but I have questions about today, which I don't have answers for. It's just the length of time here. Says here, since 2020, that you've been receiving complaints about the property. Obviously, it wasn't until 2024 that the abatement occurred. What I see here is June 23rd, code enforcement issued, August 29th, 2022, code enforcement issued. And when I look at your list of receipts for services rendered, all I see is 2023, 2024. So I have two questions. Are we capturing all of our work and putting it on our administrative costs? Because it doesn't feel like we're doing it, at least on this case. And also, I'm just kind of curious about timelines. This one, again, I don't want to use this as an example, but for current cases, what should be our average timeline? What is our average timeline? And I'm hopeful that we can get, and I don't know when you would be best prepared, but I would say it's on your terms, but I'd love to hear a code enforcement report, like number of cases, number of red tags, just to get, kind of get a full report of where we are and what we could do to help you. Because I'll be honest, I think these hearings, I don't mean it in this worst of ways, but it doesn't seem like they're necessary. I wish that we could change, I think we can change our code, so that we can make this process easier, because I feel like we're wasting your time by asking to do a presentation like this. I don't want to say no to these, you've done the work, you've cleaned it up, it's amazing, but to have to process it, to put it on the agenda, to have to do all the attachments and everything, just feels like added time, when I would prefer that you be out there doing the work that you're showing us that you're doing. So I'd love to get a report to better understand how we can help you, and what kind of timelines we're looking at, and I'm hoping that I can get consensus from the board. Again, I'm not giving you a timeline of when that needs to happen, but if we can get it maybe within the next six months, something along those lines, just so that we can look at ways to decrease the workload that we're asking you to do, and help you get to a better place, where communities can feel like there's good, timely movement in the area. Because some of these, I look at, I'm like, oh, that really sucks, that it's been two or three years. If I lived next door to that, I'd be really upset. And I get it, that we are changing things, doing better things, and it'd be nice to get an update on where we are.
We would be happy to give that update. This is a good moment for us to plug our transition over to OpenGov. Tracking time for each case will become much easier to generate those types of reports as we do change over. In the meantime, should the board be interested, or, Manager Beltramo does have a very strong sense of overall, the number of open cases that self-abate, the numbers that carry on, of course, always with that caveat, that in the last two years, we've done significant improvements internally on our processes, to make sure that we're rock-solid going forward, should they be contested. But because of the need to improve those services, we, it was prompted by discovering that in the years before that, we may have gotten a little away from where we should have been on those processes. And that's why you're seeing a number of these older cases come to you, and why they've taken longer, is because during that review, contrasting the process that had taken place with the best management practices that we have now, it's cost a little extra time for us to make sure that by the time it does come to you, it's done right. We would love to not have them come to you, if they don't need to, and so if that be the will of the board, we'd be happy to take a look at the code and come back to the board with options.
Does, does that make more sense, to do that, when you're, when you've got more, when you have OpenGov up and running, and using it more frequently?
I don't know that we need to wait for that.
Okay.
We already know that appeals rightfully should come to a deciding body, but assessments, we'll take a look at the process, we want to make sure that we're maintaining due process rights for all of our property owners, but we'll take a look and see if there's some sort of streamlining, because I can understand the board's frustration, that by the time you get these assessment items, we've already done the work. It has been an ongoing complaint, and so it has been resolved. Possibly, we could then switch to periodic updates of abatements that have taken place, so the board can stay informed. But we'd be happy to look at options, should that be the will of the board.
Is there a consensus to bring back such a report?
Well, I want to make sure that we're not overburdening you, and you're already clearly trying to get caught up on a lot of things.
We'd be happy to bring this back to you in six months, 12 months. We are transitioning to OpenGov by the end of this year in code enforcement, and building to quickly follow as well. And I do appreciate the board's support, since we are all pretty busy up there.
Yeah.
Please.
I think weighing in on it too, when you feel like you have time, at least, that's my thoughts. What I will commend you on is, since my time on the board here, seen a big improvement over the last couple of years, as far as bringing these abatements. And I know, when I first came on, there were, heck, we even had a supervisor, I think, that left and said there was something for a decade that stood here, you know, that was going on with an ongoing problem in a community. So appreciate the work that's been done, and yeah, it does seem tedious, but we're moving in the right direction. So I'm with Supervisor Price, I don't want to overburden you, we've got a lot of work going out of that office, not only to deal with these things, but everything else that's happening with, with all of our general, the updates and everything, with our lay pack and GPAC and everything else going on. So would really just rely on you to think when this would be six to 12 months, I think this is reasonable.
Great.
Probably the 12-month is more realistic next spring sometime, so.
How about we do this?
My thoughts.
Let's switch over to OpenGov, make sure that's running smoothly, give it about six months of data, and at that point, we can, we can come back. It kind of feels fun that I'm negotiating, like, I'm pushing for it, and you guys are like, wait, wait, wait. This is great, thank you. But yeah, let's, let's let OpenGov get started. I fully credit Marcus and his team for the exceptional work that has been going on. They have just been diving into every training they can get. What I heard, the drone training was really fun to watch, when Sam was taking them through obstacles in the board chambers, but we've just got a really great team of code enforcement officers that are doing really great work out in our community right now. So yes, we'll start OpenGov, give it about six months to work out kinks, get working smoothly, crank out some level of meaningful report, and we'll come back.
Is the team fully staffed, or is it still, are we still on the lookout?
No, we are not fully staffed right now. We do have open positions, we are currently going through the interview process to hopefully fill those positions, so, no, to answer your question, we are not fully staffed, so we are still...
50%, something like that?
I'm sorry?
50%?
I would say more than 50%. I don't, I don't know if I could put a precise percentage on it, but obviously, we don't have the staffing to meet the demands and the complaints that are coming in, and the issues in the community, but the way we look at it, we just take it one by one, we just try to solve them one by one, and just kind of keep working through them, and do the best we can. Some of them we have to get creative on, so we can expedite that process to bring it into compliance and relieve the frustrations in those communities, but hopefully, hopefully when we do get fully staffed, we'll have adequate staffing to address all these issues in each township, in each area, in each program area that we're charged with overseeing. So I'm positive for the future. I do feel we have a competent staff that knows their job, has experience, understands what they're seeing, and understands how to go through the process in a timely manner, so I am positive and hopeful of the future, and we do have some potential interview candidates that I have a lot of high hopes for.
Thank you, Marcus.
And just going back to the reason the conversation is here, in the next six months, I believe we're going to continue to see some of these presentations, and I just feel like they're, they're added burden to the work that we're actually asking you to do, which is to clean up the community, which you do, which is why today, we have this in front of us. So the more I see this, the more I feel like if we don't change things, we're also adding that, continuing to place that burden on you. Maybe it's not a full report, but anything we can do to reduce, I would say bring it back to us, when it's possible to bring it back to us, so that we can look at ways to make your job a little easier and less bureaucratic, because this is just putting presentations together and having to do some office work, which I just feel is not always necessary, unless there's an appeal or something of the kind.
And I'd just like to add, also, our officers have to take time out of their day to...
Absolutely.
It takes half a day to sit through these hearings, and it boils over the afternoon, or goes over in the afternoon, that's more time, where our goal is to have them out in the field, talking to property owners, working with people in the community, and getting these issues resolved.
So I do respect your time and all the other things that are on your plate, and hopefully, we can see it not 12 months from now, but earlier, but please let us know when you are ready to bring that to us, because I think it's important to look at better ways for us to handle and deal with these things, so that we can make sure to leave you be and let you work. Those are my only comments. Thank you for the cleanup. Let's go ahead and open it up for public comment. See no hands up in the Zoom room, and no one getting up in the chamber, bringing it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve a lien in the amount of $2,452.53, and direct staff to record a lien against the property with the Lake County Recorder's Office. After recordation, the lien amount should and shall be delivered to the county auditor, who shall enter the amount of the lien on the assessment roll as special assessments.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Let's go ahead and move on to our 1015, 1015 hearing, consideration of requests for post-abatement hearing on account and proposed assessment of abatement, 6647 Chevyat Road, Lucerne, California, APN number 034352-02. And we should probably do another swearing-in, since this is a different case, and so if you're in the Zoom room, please raise your hand if you wish to provide testimony to this case, and if you are in the chamber, please follow directions from Johanna. No, I don't see any hands up.
Your right hand raised, do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you very much. And back to Mr. Beltramo.
How, how would you like me to do this?
I'd say try to do what's best for you, and I'll let you know if it changes on Zoom, I have Zoom open, just to pay attention and see what's going on.
All right. So again, this is a lien hearing for 6647 Chevyat Road. Again, this is the parcel right next to the property we just discussed prior. This is the how, the property with the structure on it, so again, it's...
Yeah, it's not working.
So just like this?
Yep, just click on the next slide. Sorry about that.
No, it's code enforcement stuff, we adapt, overcome, and supervise, and we get the job done. So here's again, a map of the area, let's see here. The property owner, again, is Kathleen Capitan, she is deceased, it is an R1 zoning property. This property did have a manufactured home. The property was in a state of disarray...
The property was in a state of disarray. There should be some context is that prior, we were looking at some of the properties in the area along with the sheriff's department. We came across this property here. This property's been a known property, a magnet property where public nuisances occur, other social nuisances occur. As we stopped in there, we looked at it, we discovered there's issues with the electrical. And so we discovered, we called PG&E. PG&E came out and determined that they were stealing electrical or they were not obtaining the power through the proper channels in the proper manner. So PG&E came out and cut the power. At that point, we had to red tag the property. As the individuals who were occupying the property moved out of the property and moved somewhere else, the neighborhood or the community, surrounding community started to strip the house. And they, the house was already in a bad condition. It wasn't really on a, a solid foundation. There was plenty of maintenance issues in the property, making it a substandard property. But when the electrical got cut and the people moved out, that's when other individuals set in and started to strip the house, literally strip it apart and take it apart piece by piece. And that's what a lot of the debris you saw with, that was on the other vacant lot that we discussed prior. So as you can see here, the house is not really in a good condition. It doesn't have the weatherization, it's unsafe, it's structurally not sound. As you go into it, you could see it didn't even have a back wall here. The walls don't have any insulation. This, all this leads up to a determination of making it a substandard property. The floorboards were not structurally sound, so if you stepped on them, they would sag or you could break through them. The back end of the house was not on a foundation. The hill was kind of slowly eroding the foundation. So if an earthquake or some seismic activity happened, that house would technically fall off, fall off its foundation. As you can see, there's holes throughout. It's, there's no siding or exterior weatherization. You could see the weather is crouching in on the property. As the weather comes into the house, it deteriorates the, the infrastructure of the house and wears on it. You can see it's just in a bad state. It's unsafe and here again, here's the electrical that they were doing some crazy things with. I can't really get into the technicalities of it, but PG&E determined that it was unsafe and the power needed to be cut and they were also obtaining power improperly. I also want the board to know that before we do any demolition work or anything that's construction related, we do get an expert opinion. So we went to our chief building official. In this case, it was Bill Collins. We have him review our evidence. If he needs to, we'll take him out there for a site visit. He made the determination that the house was, met the criteria to be demolished and needed to go. It was unsafe. So we relying on that expert opinion, we moved forward and cited the property. We cited several violations of chapter 13 and chapter five. We cited the vacant structure ordinance. We cited the property being unsafe, being unsightly and a contagious, condition dangerous, unsafe and detrimental to public safety. Again, based on our evidence and our observations and inspection of the property, the chief buildings inspections of the property and his, his review, we determined that the property needed to be demolished. So we hired a contractor and we moved forward with the demolition. And the property's now been restored to a vacant lot. During the abatement, 13.27 tons of miscellaneous materials removed, .085 tons of metal removed, one tire and one refrigerator was removed. The cost of the abatement is $8,031.59. Contractor abatement, $6,178.75. Before you do any demolition, you have to get an asbestos test. That's just a law and best practices. So we had an asbestos test done. There was asbestos found. That was an $1,000 cost. Administration fee is $852.84. At this time, we were, staff is recommending that the board supervisors approve a lien in the amount of $8,000, $8,031.59 and direct staff to record a lien against the property. After recordation, it shall be delivered to the county auditor who shall enter the amount of the lien on the assessment role as a special assessment. And that concludes my presentation for this property and I'm open to any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions, comments? Okay, let's go ahead and open it up for public comment. If we can stop sharing the screen, please. I see no movement in the chamber and no hands up in Zoom. And so let's go ahead and bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve a lien in the amount of $8,031.59 and direct staff to record the lien against the property with the Lake County Recorder's Office. After recordation, shall be delivered to the county auditor who shall enter the amount of the lien on the assessment role as a special assessment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And look at that, right on time for our 10:30 AM hearing. Consideration of request for post-abatement hearing on account and proposed assessment of abatement 5323 Jamie Lane, Kelseyville, California, APN number 0888031-03. If you are on Zoom and you wish to testify on this item, please raise your hand and we will unmute you. And if you are in the chamber, please follow directions from Johanna as you get sworn in for this item.
All right. With your right hand raised, do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
And I guess we'll follow the same process as before, just clicking each slide?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so this is a lien hearing for 5323 Jamie Lane, California. This is in Kelseyville, California. Again, we always provide a map of the area. The property owner was a Raymond Couch. We could not locate Raymond Couch, so we did internet searching and we looked through, talked to the recorder's office. We determined that he was deceased. We couldn't find anybody that knew anything about him, but we did do our due diligence and we did, made a good faith attempt to determine if he was alive or around. We could, from the internet searches and from the information we were able to obtain, we determined that he was deceased. He owned 50% of the property. Milos Slubner had, is also deceased. At the time that we were conducting the abatement, he was alive. The property incurred a fire. After the fire damage, his health severely deteriorated. And then he passed away probably six, six to eight months after the fire happened. He is now deceased. Milos was a, he used to be someone that appeared in front of the board, very common in the past and someone that I think this board is familiar with. The property is owned rural residential. The lot type was improved with a home that incurred fire damage. It's now a vacant lot. Here are photos of what the lot looked like. Milos had a lot of stuff on his property. He's always, he's been known to code enforcement for a while prior to this situation here. He's always had a lot of stuff. He had cars turned over, flipped over on the property. Miscellaneous stuff spread, debris's just spread all over the place. Remnants of the fire here, other damaged vehicles. Another car that's flipped over on its side, other just rubbish and debris scattered across the property. We cited the property for two violations of chapter 13 of the public nuisance, the Lake County Public Nuisance Code for existence of garbage and rubbish and being a sightly appearance or providing harborage for rats and vermin and then open outdoor storage. Approximately 37, 37,000 pounds, 600 pounds of trash and rubbish were removed from the property. The vehicles, we did not charge them to the property. They were towed under Ava. That's a separate program. We were just trying to reduce the cost basis here. So some vehicles were towed, but not all vehicles were towed. There does need to be a little explanation in this situation. Before Milos passed, we didn't obtain a warrant for this property. We went to Milos, we talked to him about the situation. He was in agreement that the property did need to be abated. He didn't have the funds. He didn't feel that it was right for the property being the condition that it was and that the county should go ahead with his abatement. He did consent to the abatement. He did consent to the charges. He was living in a list, he was residing in a living facility, assisted living facility when we were just talking with him. He wanted to sign our right of entry and consent to the abatement and the costs. We would not allow that. We, we asked him to have a son or somebody on his behalf present so that our officers could explain to him about the abatement, the cost that would be incurred in the lien that would be put on the property. Milos signed our right of entry and consent form for the abatement and agreed to the cost and the lien for the property in front of our two officers here who can testify to meeting with Milos and his son. We then went ahead with the abatement. The cost of the abatement was $8,716.53. The contractor's cost was $8,279.85. The administration fees amounted to $436.68. At this time, the staff is recommending the board supervisors approve a lien in the amount of $8,716.53 and direct staff to record the lien against the property. After recordation, shall be delivered to the county auditor who should enter the lien as a special, on the assessment role as a special assessment. So that concludes my presentation and I'm open to any questions.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Piska.
So is the lot completely cleaned up now?
No, the lot is not completely. So there's been other code issues surrounding that property. Milos's children have moved into the property, the next, that's neighboring, abutting this property here. There have been some issues there. People have been dumping on there. The property was not fully cleaned up. Milos only consented to certain, a certain dollar amount that could be abated there. And so we went and looked, cleaned up all that stuff, but there have been other issues and other contributing factors that have added to some of the debris and some of the issues that are now occurring on that lot.
And I, I do remember getting calls from the neighbors because there was a concern of them pushing the debris into the creeks. Remember that?
So I, I have no knowledge. If, if Mike wishes to testify, that he can step up.
Yeah, the neighbors did.
Please get your name, please?
Michael Henshaw, code enforcement officer. The neighbors did make reports that after the fire, Milos or possibly his daughter and the gentleman staying with her had been pushing the debris further back and it floods out there, the whole field floods. So where it was, was actually about that far underwater by the time that we got everything out of there. So if we didn't remove that stuff, it would have been completely underwater. We cleaned up all the burnt material as it is a hazard. That getting into a waterway is not a good thing. I know that there's a lot of creeks and stuff that run through that area. So we really pushed just to get the hazard out first. The only things we left on the property were some other debris that was very minor, but since then, they have brought in a large amount of debris.
So there are ongoing efforts on that property now?
So we had to hold off for a second because there was a law enforcement action for a illegal cannabis grow that we were also, code enforcement was also involved in. So we kind of let that take its course. There is another property in that area that is on our radar. So I'm thinking that we're going to have to address that property and this property at the same time. We do have a list of properties, a top 10 list if you will, and we're sticking to that schedule. And so there's other properties ahead of it that are more of a priority that are in, are ready to be abated. And so we're going right down. So we will have to come circle back to this property and go through our processes with it. I'm unsure if a notice has been posted on this property, but there is a property not too far down that is on our radar that is a bigger issue. And I figure that we'll probably have to address those at the same time as the occupants of that property are also contributing factors to the issues occurring on this property that are code violations.
And all of this is along Coal Creek, which is our hitch habitat and this area always floods, so.
Yes, I'm aware of that and.
Just for them.
Yeah, the, the one property that I'm referring to that's not germane to this issue right here is going to be a logistical challenge. And there's a lot going on there and it seems to be an ever-evolving situation. So as the situation evolves, we have to evolve with it. But at some point, we will circle back to this, but right now we have a schedule of abatements of other properties that need to be addressed and are a higher priority than the issues right now. But that is something we are aware of. It does flood. We are aware that these issues will drain into Coal Creek and it may affect the environment and the species in that area, so.
Vice Chair Crandall?
Who or what determines the priority? Is it, is it something used in the code or?
No, no, it's, it's at my discretion. And I don't, when I say at my discretion, it's not that I'm just unilaterally making these decisions. I talk to my officers, we meet as a team, we discuss them. My officers give me their feedback. I rely on their feedback. They are, they are professionals, they are experienced, they give me their input. Also, community input, community reaction, effect on the communities is a factor that contributes to what we determine to be a priority. The overall effect to the community, those kind of issues. So there's a, there's a lot of factors that kind of come into play as what is a priority. Also, logistically, it's what can we do? We do have some logistical challenges that we're working through and I've recently had some positive developments on that, so I'm still staying hopeful. But there's some abatements that we can do and we can go ahead and get, we need to get those done. There's some that are more complex and provide challenges that we are working on and we can't do those abatements till those issues are resolved. And the big issue for that is storing a personal property. And the bigger issue of that is RVs and cars and stuff like that that have value and don't meet a criteria where they can just be junked and disposed of. So I think we've maybe haven't had a breakthrough. I'm not going to comment too further on that. I don't like to get my hopes too high, you know? I've learned in this job, you just kind of methodically go through these things and you hope for the best and hope they'll work out. But right now, I would say the discretion of what's a priority is, is, that's, that's, that's my decision and that's my call ultimately, but I do that with feedback from my team. And again, I take into a lot of factors. Complaints, effect on the community, effect on the environment and length of time, which has also been brought up here earlier, is also an issue as well.
Thank you, Marcus.
Any other questions or comments? Supervisor Green?
Just the Supervisor Piska's comment, if it's not totally cleaned up, is there going to be additional abatement work that needs to happen?
I would anticipate that we would be going through this process again for this property. And I would imagine if the behavior of the surrounding neighbors and occupants continue, even if we abated it a second time, there probably would be a third time. The issue with nuisance properties is really not the properties, it's the behavior of the people that occupy the properties or the behavior of the people surrounding those properties that contribute to those nuisances. And until that behavior is resolved, the nuisances and the violations will continue to occur.
But in this case, okay, never mind, thank you.
So two things that I wanted to mention for this case. One is I'm, I don't know what the legality of it is, but I'm very uncomfortable with what I feel is too much health information of an individual. I think that you did the right thing in the way that you did it. And if anything would come to question that, that that would be within a request to what process did you use? That's just me. I, I need to look at county council. But when I was reading through the memo, it just struck me as a little too much information regarding someone's health, someone's status of where they were being taken care of and, and things like that. Because those questions wouldn't have popped in my mind. I know that we do our due diligence to ensure that we, I know you meet with county council often as well, to ensure that you're following the rules of engagement the way that you should. And so just not a mandate to not do that again because I don't know the legality, but I know I was uncomfortable when reading through that. My second one is you mentioned that the property owner said, stop here, let's not go past this number. I would like to take that entirely out of the hands of property owners. If they're not self-abating, then we're not just going to limit the, the type of abatement that we do unless we're limited by the funds that we have left over. That would be our only resource limit. But if we're listening to property owners of where to stop and start as far as abatements go, then they've already missed their opportunity to have say. We need to clean the property and move on to the next one, not leave stuff behind and go on to the next one. That's just my personal comments.
On, on that one, it's again, it was a timing issue. That area does flood. We knew it to be an area that does flood. So we had the ability to go in and get it immediately. We wanted to go in and get it immediately before the rain started. That was the goal, but I agree with your comments as well.
Thank you very much. And I, I'm sorry that you keep dealing with the same properties again and again. And I, I know that there is work being done on the data ticket. I've seen some of the back and forth with our auditor controller and. I've seen some of the back and forth with our auditor controller and tax collector. I think that that addition is what we've been looking for to change behavior because that does have, it offers more teeth to the ordinances that we have. So looking forward to that being fully done and completed and active so that we can see what the results of that will be.
Yeah. And I'd also like to add that, you know, we've been working with the sheriff's department a lot closer lately and they've also helped to, helped us to solve some of these behavior problems through their channels and the, from the criminal perspective. So hopefully that relationship will continue and these people that are contributing factors, they will be held accountable.
Thank you. If there's nothing further, let's go ahead and open it up for public comment. I see no hands in the Zoom room and please come on up to the microphone.
Citizen and journalist Joan Moss. I really like and respect Maria and, and the code abatement people. I do really like Lake County. It sounds like Bruno zoomed in on you've started to internet with the law enforcement. And I believe that after last week, I've watched a few of these hearings, I think that behavioral health, you can make a referral to behavioral health and some of these problems of these property owners might be dealt with and solved. Thank you. That's the idea. Internet depart, interdepartment networking, that's what I'm asking for.
Thank you very much. And I'm certain, because I've seen this happen in the past, I know you've dealt with homeless encampments and other things that you do work with other departments, other than just law enforcement, to ensure people are connected to the services they need. So again, you don't have to deal with them a second time. Did you want to speak to that?
Just, we have a, a very good working relationship with behavioral health. We can send emails out there requesting their assistance and Elise connects us with the people that we need. So we do appreciate that.
Yep. Thank you very much. All right. Let's go ahead and bring it back to the board for action.
I move that the board of supervisors approve a lien in the amount of $8,716.53 and direct staff to record the lien against the property with the Lake County Recorder's Office. After recordation shall be delivered to the Lake County, to the audit, to the county auditor who shall enter the amount of the lien on the assessment roll as special assessment.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Just a quick question for you. I was a little slightly confused in the pictures. Those were vastly different pictures than the ones in the attachments. The attachment was basically the burned building. The pictures was more surrounding things around the building.
Yeah.
Okay. Just wanted to check in and make sure.
Yeah. Again, the burnt structure was the focus and getting that removed before the flood started was the, the main goal.
Okay. Just wanted to get that out there in case someone else had looked at the pictures and seen something different. Thank you very much. And we are not quite to our 11:00 AM yet. It's 10:48. Let's go ahead and take a break and come back at 11:00 AM. 12-minute break.
All right, welcome back. We are looking at item 6.8, our 11:00 AM item, public hearing, consideration of appeal, AB 23-03, of Planning Commission's decision to revoke major use permit, UP 19-15, for Legendary Farms LLC, at 2290 Soda Bay Road, Lakeport, which is located at APN 008-010-09. So first and foremost, we're going to be doing an oath for all those that wish to provide testimony, both online and in the chamber, as well as staff. Then we will commence with a presentation from community development, and then go ahead and open up for arguments from the appellant to be made. I'd like to try and be not brief in meaning three minutes, but let's try not to go for a very long amount of time. But I want to make sure you have the chance to provide your arguments on both sides. I just wanted to kind of set the tone for what we anticipate to have. We did dwindle this down, so this is solely about the revocation of the use permit today in front of us. So let's go ahead and get started with the oath. Again, please raise your hand if you are in the Zoom room, which I see none, and all of those in the audience, please raise your hand if you will be providing testimony.
All right, with your right hand raised, do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Thank you.
Okay. I just have a stupid question. I'm going to embarrass myself with this. Their representative, their attorney, does not need to do an oath?
Please start, no.
What was that?
No.
Okay.
Mr. Chern.
Thank you. Better to ask than not to know. All right, let's go ahead and get started. As I stated, CDD's presentation.
Good morning. Yep, morning. I'm Mariaa Turner, Community Development Director. Before you today is a portion of an appeal, AB 23-03, focusing on the Planning Commission's decision. Yeah, that's the wrong one.
And it's showing on Zoom.
This portion of AB 23-03 is focusing solely on the Planning Commission's decision to revoke major use permit, UP 19-15, for Legendary Farms. Nope, that's the other one. Maybe up there at the top left, there are two labeled Legendary Farms. That's it. Yeah, thank you. Awesome. We're just going to get that up and running. Legendary Farms is located on 2290 Soda Bay Road in Lakeport. Awesome. Thank you very much.
And everything's working on Zoom, so you can, I don't know why it didn't before, but we're good.
Just as a quick recap to bring us to where we are today, on September 28th, 2023, the Planning Commission unanimously approved revocation of major use permit, UP 19-15. They also determined a number of persons as responsible persons for high severity violations. When the appeal of both those actions came before you, on August 27th of this year, due to the lack of proper noticing for some of the responsible persons, which is a different noticing process in Chapter 13 than what we usually do for revocations, which is in our zoning ordinance, where we follow the government code notifying folks by mail and property owners within 725 square feet of the project parcel. This was a different one, and so out of an abundance of caution, I did switch the recommendation at that time that the board uphold the appeals that were limited to deeming responsible persons responsible for high severity violations. Effectively, we removed the high severity violation from what is going on today or what is before you today. Since the focus of today's item is on revocation, I will refer to Article 60 in Chapter 21 of our zoning code, and I did provide paper copies for the Board, CAO, County Council, Press, and there are extra copies on the dais. I already did during the break. You should be at all your spots. This is an overview or aerial view of the Legendary Farms site. It's approximately, the one parcel is approximately 41 and 1/4 acres, virtually flat, as you can see on the left-hand side, which has the slope layer applied on our GIS system. You can see that pretty much the only slope is the creek that's on the west-hand side. If you look to the picture of the, at the right-hand side, you will see the approved cannabis cultivation site, which is up to one acre, one type III, in the low to middle part of that parcel, and the non-permitted cannabis cultivation site located at the other end of the parcel. It's approximately 700 and some odd feet, maybe 800. So to put that in perspective, if we were to step outside the board chambers right now and look down the hill, it would be the distance between where we are and maybe Library Park that far away. Also, please note the two white rectangular structures at the bottom or southeast part of the parcel. These are two unpermitted 5,000-square-foot metal buildings that will be covered at a future point, or a future slide.
Is that 5,000 square foot each?
Each.
Yeah.
This parcel, as the community knows, has also been used as the Rancho de la Fuente Event Center, and a good chunk of that flat land has historically been used for hay production. I'm not taking that call. Another point of interest on this particular parcel, it is located within the Farmland Protection Zone, and according to Ordinance 3103, it needs to transfer to mixed-lake cultivation no later than May 21st, 2023. No permits have issued, have been issued as of this date for any greenhouses. This is the Legendary Farms site plan that was approved by the Planning Commission. Again, it shows that one acre of outdoor canopy, processing to take place in the barn that was formerly used for the Rancho de la Fuente events. The yellow rectangle on the southeast part of the site plan identified an ag barn. On the right-hand side, again, just for reference, you'll see the approved canopy right where it should be, two buildings not where the site plan says they will be, and also later on, we'll see that they were also not used as ag-exempt structures. And then, again, the northeast corner, the up to, it was around 3,300 unpermitted cannabis plants getting cultivated in a very similar manner to the approved cannabis plants. The Planning Division of Community Development performs annual compliance monitoring site visits for all of our cannabis permatees, except for the ones who either opt out, or no, actually, the ones who opt out, in which case, if they're outdoor cultivation, we can just take a look on satellite, and if they are not, if they are not outdoor cannabis cultivation, we actually still do a drive-by or find out and just take a look. On September 12th, 2022, staff did perform an annual compliance monitoring site visit. There were planning and code enforcement staff present, and they met permatee Melissa Smith and her agent, Michael Wegner, on site. These are just some of the pictures entering the site, the method of cultivation underneath the hoop houses and the metric tags. The metric tags are something that we're always looking for to make sure that these are licensed by the state of California, and they were present in the permitted cultivation When staff arrived on this date, they noticed a second fenced area approximately 800 feet away from the approved cannabis cultivation area. They requested access to that second area. At that time, the permatee, Melissa Smith, left the group. Mr. Wegner escorted the team to that area where they found approximately 3,300 additional These photos are just to show similarities in the layout of the pots, but we also did find similarities in the types of strains used, as well as the handwriting on the tags and other markings in the area. On the previous date, or on that date of the initial site visit, staff also requested access to the two large 5,000-square-foot metal buildings, but they were denied access at that time. So the next day, code enforcement and law enforcement staff returned to the site, met Mr. Wegner, who was, who actually did the scheduling of that return visit with our staff. That time, we delivered a notice of violation and a notice of nuisance in order to abate. Law enforcement demanded access to those structures, and they were allowed access at that time. A little background on these structures, our department had received two applications for agriculture-exempt structures, and according to our code and consistent with the application, the proposed use for an ag structure is to be limited to places where your animals can, your chickens can be in it, storage of farming implements and supplies, so grains, things like that. And in the applications, there were two, one submitted by Frank Perez, the previous owner of the property, the second submitted by Melissa Smith. The uses proposed were the storage of hay, walnuts, and tractors. The first permit for the ag-exempt structure was approved, but it was to be located over closer towards the barn or the approved cultivation area. The second one was in process but not issued. So neither permits were approved for the building in their, buildings in their current location, nor were they to be a part of the major use permit, 19-15, for the cannabis Additionally, ag-exempt building permits do not include electrical or water. Those can be achieved or secured through a separate permit, a building permit. They're also not meant for places of employment. So that second day, when staff did gain access to these structures, this is what they found. Observed were irrigation systems, oscillating fans mounted to the walls, grow lights mounted to the ceiling, air conditioning unit, propane tank, air exhaust systems, multiple extension cords, dried cannabis vegetative waste on the floor, rope strung throughout the interior, sticker labels with cannabis strain names, stacks of black and yellow totes, industrial fans, refrigerator, wall-mounted flat screen, a number of hoses. No electrical permits are on record for this, for either of these structures. As staff went around behind the structures, they noted an extension cord connecting the structures and crossing the parcel line to the neighboring property. The next year, we went back on September 27th for another annual compliance monitoring visit. We did so because this case had not been brought to the board or for any sort of revocation, which would stay, no action had been taken, which would have stayed, or, I'm sorry, which would have stopped the cannabis operations according to use permit 1915. And so we did perform another annual compliance monitoring visit. It was noted that the outdoor cultivation was continuing, and at this point, it became an issue because this property is within the Farmland Protection Zone and should be transitioning over to greenhouses and mixed light.
When was that transition date again?
May 21st, 2023. This site visit took place on September 27th, 2023.
Thank you.
Staff went back into the still unpermitted buildings. One still has the, the processing cannabis, or the cannabis processing infrastructure still in place. Second one still has all the electrical in place. Again, no building permit for electrical. They went, they noted the false wall that you can see the door to in that picture on the left. Went into that room and still noted electrical, oops, sorry, in that second structure, still had the television mounted to the wall on the outside with electrical wiring, and then inside that second room, electrical panels, a large television that was screened on a shelf, a thermometer still on the wall, cannabis matter still on the floor. Major use permit 19-15 was approved for one acre of outdoor cultivation, along with a type III self-distribution license permit. The cannabis operation, because it has an approved discretionary permit, is to be operated according to the conditions of approval approved by the Planning Commission. Activity observed by staff that is not in compliance with the conditions of approval was unpermitted cultivation in excess of the approved conditions noted on the parcel, unpermitted structures used in cannabis operation, not part of the major use permit, and actually used other than the storage of hay, walnuts, and tractors, unpermitted electrical wiring, and a lack of conversion to the mixed-lake greenhouses. The conditions of approval that apply to these findings are 8.1, substantial conformance with the site plan, which was shown in an earlier slide, 8.3, prior to cultivation, building permits should be secured for all new structures, and 8.20, noting the required conversion to greenhouses by May 21st, 2023. Article 60 does allow for revocation of use permits for violations of terms or conditions of the approved permit. It is the recommendation of this department to deny the appeal of the Planning Commission's revocation of the major use permit, UP 19-15, for the property located at 2290 Soda Bay, oop, not board, road, sorry, based on those violations that were listed in the previous slide and are listed again here, and to direct staff to prepare findings of fact for board consideration at a future date. That concludes my presentation, except to note also that during the break, I also presented the board, as well as County Council, Press, Public, and CAO with a, an attachment of showing the notice of public hearing for both the Planning Commission and the board, as well as the mailing list to whom it was mailed out to, and the affidavit of publication in the Record B, which is according to our government code that we follow for noticing of all public hearings. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions.
All right. Are there any questions before we move on to, excuse me, the next presentation? Supervisor Green.
Thank you for the presentation. I think the most relevant question here is, which ordinance are we proceeding under? Are we having disposed of the responsible parties at the private hearing? Are we continuing under the notion that we are following the provisions of the ordinance pertaining to high severity violations? Or are we having a hearing today for more of a garden variety revocation under Article 60?
Thank you. The board did do away with the high severity violation parts of the project. Today's focus is entirely on the activities taking place on the parcel as it pertains to Article 60 in the zoning code. to Article 60 in the zoning ordinance to proceed with a recommendation of revocation.
But that's based on an appeal of the planning commission's action, and that entire hearing was conducted on the basis of it being a high severity violation.
The planning commission made their decision based on a very similar presentation to what I just gave you, showing the activities that were noted by staff during both of the annual compliance monitoring visits. The data and the information are still presented to you as they were seen by the planning commission. The high severity violation, the deeming of responsible persons, has been separated from that decision as far as the board action. But I'll also defer to county council to give you the legalese version of that.
There are two. Hello? There are two sort of parallel actions that were brought before the planning commission and your board. One under Chapter 13 and one under Chapter 21. You have, you have dismissed, your board has dismissed the action for Chapter 13, which was a nuisance violation, and that pertained to the high severity violations and the responsible persons. That has been dismissed. We are now focusing on Chapter 21, which is, as you say, a garden variety revocation. Both of these actions are based on the same set of facts and circumstances, but they are not dependent on each other. And so, but not only that, but the high severity violation, Chapter 13 section also does say that it is anticipated to be in conjunction with other actions. So it can be brought at the same time as a, as a revocation. The issue was notice, and that Chapter 13 high severity violation issue has been, has been dealt with by your board. So as you noted, now we're dealing with a revocation under Chapter 21. And there are findings related to that, and they would be based on the facts that staff has presented today.
I'd like that to speak for county council, but I'm going to note that in their filings and at planning commission and in the prior hearing, they have indicated that staff and council have conflated the two procedures. And I think there's some validity to that observation. For example, the planning commission hearing, it was all, all responsible parties all the time, as was noted by one of the commissioners that cast a wide net, and they didn't really deep dive into who was responsible, who was not. This board disposed of that issue at the first appeal hearing before it. But to the extent any examination was made by the planning commission of responsible parties, which aren't even defined in the Article 60, they didn't really spend a lot of time diving into the Chapter 21. And I don't think there was really an adequate presentation on Chapter 21 issues of planning. So before we do a deep dive into a Article 60 under Chapter 21, I guess I'm just skeptical of the assertion that you can pick and choose from the high severity ordinance and then Chapter 21 and a revocation hearing initiated with different criteria. For example, if we were to stick to our guns on the high severity violation, having disposed of the responsible parties, and because there's been no imposition of a fine, there's no administrative penalty to consider under the high severity ordinance, and therefore, any appeal is moot because there's nothing to appeal. There's nothing left of the high severity. To the extent we are going to have a hearing today for revocation under Chapter 21 and the provisions of Article 60. I don't think we ever got to where we needed to be at the planning commission level. And so we're going to hear this de novo, so I guess maybe that's moot. But I just don't know. It seems like we're switching procedural horses midstream, and I see the nodding head, but I get to nod my head too up here. So explain to me then what the theory of the case is in your presentation, and if you need to supplant that again with some additional information. But how is the appellate legendary farms considered responsible for the violation here?
So the Chapter 13 nuisance violation for, for, we'll call them HSVs, high severity violations, HSVs and responsible persons, and the Chapter 21 permit violations are based on the same set of facts and circumstances. So a violation noted by staff and brought to the deciding body would be presented for both of them. A violation, the planning commission need not find, need not find that there was a financial penalty or a high severity violation or a responsible person in order to find that there were violations and that a revocation is appropriate under Article 20, Article 60 and Chapter 21. That is independent from a high severity violation, Chapter 13. The Chapter 13 high severity violations have been dismissed. There is no decision for responsible persons on that other than, than the dismissal. But that is not necessary for a Chapter 21 revocation. A revocation is independent of a nuisance violation. A nuisance violation can be used to support a revocation, but it isn't required. So here, what you're looking at and what the planning commission did look at, and what was rightfully before them, were violations. And the violations could have, and according to staff, did support both a nuisance action and a permit revocation.
What they didn't do at planning was find any one of the three grounds that would justify a revocation, that the permit was obtained by fraud, that one or more of the terms or conditions in the use permit that was granted has been violated, and that the use of the permit is so conducted as to be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare or to be a nuisance. And that's on permaatee, not on the various other people that were mentioned during that hearing. So I didn't hear it, and I did go back and watch the thing, and I don't, it's not binding on us because we are here de novo, but I didn't hear anything in that hearing that specified which of the terms or conditions of use permit 1915 were violated by appellate.
So I want to just interrupt real quick. I see that Mr. Rogoway is here. I'm going to ask you to sit down. You can counterargue when it's your turn to do your presentation, but at this moment in time, we're asking questions to CDD. You'll have your chance to speak, and I'll make sure you get the time that you need as well. Thank you.
Okay. Suit to the question. After the planning commission acted, and I didn't hear them make any findings of fact. And I don't know if findings of fact were prepared for the record after that. But what, what is the specific conduct by appellate that we're talking about here today? The planning commission upheld that appellate did violate something, one, two, or three. What did they violate?
Supervisor Green, that would be numbers two and three.
And which permit conditions of approval did they violate specifically?
I believe it was.
To not grow outside of the permitted area, as evidenced by the 3,000-plus plant, or to use the AG buildings for any purposes outside of what they're allowed to do. It's perfectly fine to find that the planning commission's hearing was insufficient. Before this board is hearing it all brand new, you are free to hear this evidence for the first time, take it, take it into consideration, and not be bound by the planning commission's decision. What the planning commission did is rightfully find a revocation. The one thing they did extra was make an extra finding for high severity violations, and that shouldn't have been in front of them. We corrected that by removing them. But the way a high severity violation is found is, at the time, they would have been cited for it, and they were. And then they have an appeal process, which would have came straight to you, but they missed the window for that. Now, because we found that the notice wasn't perfect, we walked it back. But otherwise, by the time it would have gotten to you, they had missed that window. They didn't do the three things that they needed to do in order to appeal that decision. The high severity violations would already have been baked in. So the fact that the planning commission, a year after the initial search, said that, oh, and these are also high severity violations, is moot. It's not necessary to anything. They based their, their revocation decision on the evidence placed before them, on the extra plans, on the conduct.
What evidence?
Excuse me?
You found plants off the licensed premises. What evidence was presented at planning commission that appellate was a responsible party for that? And in the absence of that evidence, since we're here de novo, what evidence is staff prepared to present today that would indicate appellate is responsible for the illegal cultivation that occurred off the licensed premises?
Supervisor, the licensed premises is the parcel itself. So the licensed premises is not just the area identified as a cultivation area. The parcel itself is approved for a use. The entire parcel is approved for a use. The APN identified, the parcel identified by the APN is approved for a use. That use is subject to conditions, and part of those conditions are restricting cultivation canopy to a certain area, restricting buildings to a certain area, allowing for certain kinds of plumbing or electrical. But the parcel is the approved area, and the response, and people are always responsible for their use on a parcel and their ownership of a parcel. And it is, and the owner of a parcel is responsible for the things that occur on their parcel, even if they do in fact have a lessee who is engaging the activity. It is the owner's responsibility to maintain that property and to make sure that those to whom they lease are not violating the law. However, the penalty here is a revocation of the permit, not a conviction of the property owner. The use was not engaged in correctly.
Legendary is not the property owner.
Property owner or the lessee, but the property owner and the lessee are responsible. The person engaging in the use is responsible, but they are not, that's not the issue here because they are not being held to a nuisance violation. The issue here is whether or not the use approved was, was engaged in, in violation of the way it was approved. And if it was not, then that permit would be revoked.
I withhold my further comments.
There any other comments or questions before we move on? So I do have a couple of questions, and just to, I don't have it in front of me, but I know that I wrote here that there was talk about conditions of approval, 8.1, 8.3, and 8.20. You requested what conditions of approvals? I believe those were the comments that, that Director Turner identified the specific items within the conditions of approval that were in violation. So I just wanted to give you that answer, just because I felt we had heard that answer. One of my questions is more along the lines of timelines. You mentioned that there was two applications submitted for the ag exempt. One was approved. I tried to re-review, not thinking that I had a date, and I can't find a date. Maybe I missed it. But when was the application submitted for those ag exempt? And when was the one that was approved, approved? And what is the process for that? Do we do an inspection after it's built to make sure it's up to code and up to what was approved on the site? Kind of curious about the timeline.
Sure. I'd be happy to get that. That was included as an attachment in the planning commission's package, so let me just get there.
I apologize if it was there, and I just don't have it in memory.
No, not at all. There are a lot of pieces and parts to this project. There's the grant deeds. I think I have it.
Well, she's looking. Can you repeat those numbers you decided on?
8.1, 8.3, 8.20 is what I have written down, and I believe was concurred with by Director Turner that those were the identified.
Eight.
County Council, please.
Mr. Chair, just for a further clarification to Supervisor Green's question, I believe it's 8, 8.1, 8.3, 8.20. A as in apple.
Oh, gotcha. Thank you for that. I heard eight.
So the first app.
Fishing in places you couldn't find fish.
And for anybody trying to find it, this is attachment number seven in the planning commission's staff report. The first application for an exempt agricultural building permit was submitted by Frank Perez, dated June 23rd, 2020. We do not perform building inspections because the whole point of it being exempt is that the owner is taking on the responsibility for the integrity of that structure. But as a, as a compromise, that structure is not to be used for inhabitation, habitation, employment, things like that. So we do have an assurance by the property owner that that building will be used only to store stuff or maybe some chickens or, you know, animals. The second application.
And when was that one approved? Because you received it on June 23rd, 2020.
Looks like the signatures all came out on the 23rd, June 23rd.
All in 24 hours it was submitted?
They're pretty easy. Yeah, the process is we take a look to confirm that there is commercial agriculture activities on that parcel that is a primary use, and take a look at the, the items submitted. It also goes to the agricultural commissioner first and then comes to us at CDD. We also do get sign-offs from environmental health to note that the location of the proposed structure will not interfere with any septic or wells. And then building and safety also signs off on it before it gets the planning stamp, which was on June 23rd. The next application, which the legal owner is listed as Melissa Smith for United Investment Ventures, which is also one of the property owners, that was dated April 20th, 2022. And this one, because it was proposing a different location, had a little more notes on the application because this is in a flood zone. And so although it is an exempt structure, we need to make sure that it's going to be built at the height above the flood level to make sure that it's not going to flood every year or impact the movement of water. So this one looks like it took a little more time. It's a sign-off from EH on 426, ag commissioner from 421, then DPW and Water Resources, because of its location in the flood zone, signed off on April 3rd. And Planning Division, we signed off on, oh, no, sorry, that was May 3rd. We signed off and stamped it on May 4th.
Oh, so it was fully approved?
It's approved, but it, from what staff told me, it was not picked up.
Okay.
And let's see.
But again, both of those buildings are not in the location that were identified as the location that they were supposed to be in, or the uses were not based on the uses that ag exempt affords?
The, yeah, the permit for the second one shows that it was, it would be in that correct location, but it had no electrical to it. Could not, it was, the permit was not picked up, and I don't know. I think we tried later to get assurances that it was built above the flood zone. I'm not sure if we ever got that. But additionally, if, let me find it again. It was for the use of hay, walnuts, and tractors with no electrical.
Okay. And I think my other question was just a clarification, and you already gave that to me for May 21st, 2023 for, and basically it was no more hoop houses because the transition allowed for the hoop houses, and it had to be in an engineered greenhouse. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And again, no application has been received even to.
No application has been issued. I think we, we did get that, and I was working on getting the date. So all the staff that's listening to me now, if they could check on the date for that, when that was submitted, or if we have record of it, they'll send that to me shortly, and I'll let you know.
Okay.
Thanks.
All the questions that I had. Any further questions? All right, let's go ahead and move on. Mr. Rogoway.
Thank you, and good morning. I'd like to just kind of start with how this, this issue is framed. Evidently, Director Turner, a county counselor, trying to remediate a legal problem insofar as. insofar as there was the wrong process used in terms of Chapter 13 by going to the Planning Commission. I pointed that out to them. They denied that that was the wrong process that was used for several months. And yesterday, for the first time, Deputy County Counsel Torres admitted over the phone that this was the wrong process that the county used, which is a different argument than insufficient notice, which is what Director Turner has argued here today. The theory postulated by County Counsel is a novel legal contention that does not exist within the Lake County Code. It does not exist within the California Government Code. I have been provided with no authority to demonstrate any basis for the contention that, as County Counsel Johnson stated, there are two parallel processes. Until today, there has never been the contention by the county that there are two parallel processes. And the board does not have to take my word for it. The board can look at the same document referenced by Director Turner multiple times in her presentation. If you just look to the memorandum that was presented to the Planning Commission dated September 28, 2023. If you look at the subject line of this memorandum, this is, it says, "Consideration of Proposed Revocation of Major Use Permit UP 19-15 for Legendary Farms for High-Sensitivity Violations Located at 2290 Sota Bay Road, etc." The predicate of the proceedings, starting with the notice of violation, which incidentally was only issued to one of the four appellants, United Investment Ventures. The permitee, whose permit the board is being asked to revoke, was never provided a notice of violation, ever. Sitting here today, there's no notice of violation. Fundamentally, I don't know what we're doing here because without a notice of violation, there is nothing to take to the Planning Commission. If the Planning Commission is given the hearing that they are not legally authorized to hear, that is what's called ultra vires, which is a Latin term that lawyers use, meaning outside of legal authority, which is what I argued emphatically, as I mentioned a few moments ago, to County Counsel. And they laughed at me. They pretended like this is no big deal. And at the last, the very first, excuse me, the first time that we were here, and there was this last minute continuance of the hearing. The reason for that continuance was because I had confronted them with this legal authority. They were not willing to admit that the authority was accurate. They made up an excuse, frankly, to tell the board as to why we needed to have that continuance. And throughout the course of the proceedings, when it comes before the board, the commentary from Director Turner and from Deputy County Counsel Johnson is one of obfuscation, of trying to make things look even muddier than mud so that it's so confusing that perhaps just go ahead and deny the appeal, revoke the permit, and see what happens. However, as I mentioned a few minutes ago, at the very beginning of this process, only one notice of violation was served. That was to United Investment Ventures. That was for violations of Chapter 13, not for violations of Chapter 21. Today, you're going to hear me talk a lot about notice. And notice is something that is not just a word that lawyers use to make arguments. Notice is something of constitutional significance. It is a part of the due process clause of the United States Constitution. It is fundamental to the right of every American to have notice of what they're being accused of, to have notice of the process that they will go through for a violation. And they'll have notice of exactly what the violation is and what the consequences of that violation are and what's going to happen to them. What are their rights? What's the procedure? Can they examine witnesses? Can they present evidence? Is it a full sum hearing? Or is it three minutes of public comment in front of the Planning Commission and perhaps 10 minutes in front of the board? Standing here today before the board, I have no idea what process is controlling this, what ordinance we are operating under, what the rules are, what the board is allowed to do and not allowed to do. It's de novo, yes, but this is an appeal from the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission was unlawfully constituted. Their decision is void. We're appealing a decision that was determined to be legally void. And after that appeal was granted, I believe unanimously by the board, a new legal theory emerged from County Counsel, which is for the first time today, I didn't hear this yesterday in my call with them, the first time today, is that this is a parallel proceeding, that there are two proceedings happening at the same time contemporaneously. That is false. It's not the truth. It's not legally accurate in terms of what can happen. Factually, there is no basis for that position. If you go back to the notices, there's nothing in any of the notices that says this is going to be a parallel dual track proceeding, where at the same time, there are going to be two statutory regimes that are going to control. Both are going to be active in terms of what the county is going to seek to prosecute and ask first the Planning Commission and now the board to consider. When brought before the Planning Commission, looking back at this document that I just pointed the board to, there is nothing in this memorandum to the Planning Commission from a year ago that indicates that this is going to be a dual track, separate process. And it's not just the subject line. It is throughout the entire document. If you go through the entire document, please draw your attention to page 11 of this memorandum. Page 11 of this memorandum entitled Basis for Revocation Request, all cap letters, bold type, underlined, Basis for Revocation Request. Was it said right underneath that? High severity violation. The basis for the revocation request according to Director Turner one year ago was solely for a high severity violation. That was the stated and sole position from CDD, from County Counsel until today. To the point of Supervisor Green, this is the same thing I was thinking about as I was on my drive up here, which is that they're changing horses midstream. That's literally the expression in my mind as I was thinking about how to articulate this to the board today. One of the things that is challenging, of the many things that are challenging about this matter, is the duration of time that has elapsed from the violation to today. As we just learned, as I have known for quite some time, actually, the inspection first occurred two years ago, in 2022. At that time, immediately following the inspection, I provided County Counsel Torres, Director Turner, with a declaration that was notarized, signed under penalty of perjury by an individual named Robert Luis Torado. Mr. Torado is the tenant who rented the greenhouses, hoop houses, on the property predating appellants' occupancy and ownership of that property. And there, Mr. Torado stated unequivocally that the cultivation was his and his alone, that Mr. Smith and Mrs. Smith had nothing to do with it. They didn't know about it. He provided his phone number for the county officials to call him to verify that. And I provided that to County Counsel and Director Turner in October of 2022. I heard nothing back from them for a year. We thought that they were not going to proceed until we received the notice of hearing before the Planning Commission a year later, which is the hearing that you've heard about today. And at that hearing, Director Turner omitted the existence of the Torado Declaration entirely, as if it did not exist. And this is material evidence that is important for the Planning Commission and for the board to consider. You determine the credibility of it. You determine the veracity. You determine the relevance, of course. But it needs to be presented and not ignored. In response to the omission of the Torado Declaration, I was allotted, again, my three minutes of public comment time, three minutes in addressing a high severity violation, where the only issues that are before the Planning Commission are those of the high severity violation and the penalties associated with it, including a lifetime ban on getting use permits in the county for cannabis, including all of the various monetary penalties, et cetera. And I used that three minutes to talk about Mr. Torado and the fact that the county didn't even call him. And I knew that was true because we heard from Mr. Torado that nobody called him. Yet, in response to my arguments to the Planning Commission, Director Turner made a series of false statements about the extent to which herself and other county officials attempted to contact Mr. Torado and went into great detail about attempts to call, about attempts to, I think, even go to the house and add email and other things that they tried to do purportedly. I knew that this wasn't the truth when it was stated. Of course, I need evidence. Unable to substantiate any of the things that I do as an attorney, so I submitted a Public Records Act request to the county. That Public Records Act request took a really long time to process. And when we finally received the response from the county, the response received was that no records exist of any attempts to contact Mr. Torado whatsoever. There is no records. And we followed back up with the county. We spoke to Ms. Kennard, and she again confirmed no records exist. And of course, records would exist if calls were placed to the phone number that was in the declaration. This goes to the heart of who's responsible. If you're looking at the substance and the facts and why on the merits of the factual issues alone, aside from all of the legal issues that separately make this completely unviable as a matter to proceed, we have an individual who said this is all his. The appellants have nothing to do with it. And that has not been controverted in any way by the county. No evidence presented, no attempts to present any evidence. In response to my continued, ongoing emphatic request to look at this matter, to examine the evidence in good faith, I met literally with laughter as recently as yesterday. County Counsel Johnson, County Counsel Torres, Director Turner were laughing at me on the call before they hung up on me. This is your county. This is who is interfacing with attorneys, an attorney for appellants who have been going through this process for two years. For two years, it's been the wrong process. For two years, they've been going through this process where three out of four of the appellants have had no notice of any violation, where the county has made no attempt to even contact the person who said it's all theirs. Before today, before the last hearing on August 27, I have had three minutes to present the case of appellants to the county. Three minutes in two years. They've been going through this. They've been paying for me. Their life has been on hold. The conversation about them not being able to get permits or not attempting to get permits to do the conversion from outdoor into mixed light is a ruse because they've been going through the notice of violation process the whole time. It's not like they're going to be issued new permits while they're going through revocation proceedings. When that due date came about, that 2023 due date, they've been, they've been in the middle of this. What is the expectation of the county for someone to go and apply for and pay for new permits simultaneously while the county is attempting to revoke those same permits? It's nonsensical. It should not be a basis for a revocation. Going back to legal issues, I want to highlight, it looks like there's some photographs being passed around.
We'll make sure.
Another copy of that, thank you.
We'll make sure you got a copy.
If the board, thank you. If the board looks at, it looks like, so what I'm being provided is a notice of nuisance and abatement handed to Michael Wagner. So that, just for the record, I don't, I don't know the relevance to that at the moment. But going back to this memorandum, we don't have to just stop at page 11. Let's go next to page 12. Page 12 goes through what Director Turner's asking the Planning Commission to do. Find responsible persons pursuant to Section 47Q of Chapter 13. And so there's a section related to that. The next section is revocation of permits. And so on page 12, we have the revocation of permits, where we had the basis being, again, for a high severity violation. And then going to page 13, we have the recommendation. The recommendation, if you look at underneath the heading, Recommendation, Community Development Director Turner recommends the Planning Commission take the following actions. Revoke major use permit UP 19-15 for Legendary Farms, including deeming responsible persons, permitee, Legendary Farms, Melissa Smith, property owner, United Investment Ventures LLC, Justin Smith, former Legendary Farms agent, Michael Wagner, adjacent property owner, Roberto Estrada, and joint tenants Carl and Lilani Colrus located at 2290 Sota Bay Road, APN 008-010-29 for high severity violations with the following findings. There's nothing in here about a separate process, about a Chapter 21 anything. It's only, only, only high severity violations. Then if you look further down, the sample motion for the revocation, the motion from Director Turner to revoke the permit, contrary to what was just asserted to you, which was false, obviously. Look here. I move that Planning Commission revoke major use permit 19-15 for Legendary Farms. It goes on to list the parties as I just listed. And at the end of the paragraph, "for high severity violations based on the findings listed in the staff memorandum dated September 28, 2023." It's unequivocal. This is the record. This is what was being asked of the Planning Commission and what the Planning Commission did. They adopted the sample motion. This is a motion that was adopted. This is a motion that appellants appealed. This is the motion before the board. It is unequivocal. Whatever is being argued to the board now with respect to this dual process, this parallel process, is a sham. It's not the truth. It was not true at the time. It was not true for the next year. This was never raised to me either formally or informally here or over the phone or via email. In fact, County Counsel and Director Turner won't respond to me. For the most part, my emails, my letters, formal correspondence on law firm letterhead go unresponded to because they don't know how to respond, is my assumption. That took them a while to figure out what their story is. How are they going to argue to the board that this is still viable? They didn't have anything to argue to me. They had no legal authority that they could cite to me because it doesn't exist. So they cooked something up and presented it here today. You don't have to take my word for it. Look at the record. Look at what we see on chapter, see my page 13, with respect to the Chapter 13 issues. And then today, for the first time, without any notice, again, no notice of violation for three out of the four appellants. The one appellant who has notice of violation is for Chapter 13. No notice of today's hearing. I understand that that was just presented at the break. I raised this to County Counsel and Director Turner yesterday. They said that you don't need it. Apparently, you do because they present it to you, but not me. When I asked them what the basis is of the notice of the Chapter 21 violation, because no one has any notice of violation for any Chapter 21 anything, they said, you don't need it. And I said, why? And Deputy County Counsel Torres said, because people know what they did wrong, and that's your notice. As a matter of law, that is legally inadequate. That is not how it works. The government accuses somebody of doing something wrong. The government doesn't get to say, you know what you did wrong. That's enough. That's not how any of it works. Imagine being accused of a crime. And you're asking the government, what is the crime that I committed? What did I do wrong? And they said, you know what you did. You're in trouble. We're going to the penalty phase. Is that America? Is that Lake County? It is according to Director Turner and is according to Deputy County Counsel Johnson, but it's not the law. I'm hopeful that the process for this revocation proceeding concludes today. I'm hopeful that the process for this revocation proceeding concludes today with a granting of the appeal. If the county wants to proceed with a Chapter 21 violation, they should find the appropriate way to do so. They should go see if they can have a new notice violation, they can bring that through the appropriate channels, if they can have that go through a lawful mechanism, and then we can respond to that as needed. But this proceeding can't be salvaged. This proceeding can't be remediated by now claiming at this late stage, after so many opportunities to have done the right thing and followed the law, they can't now claim that this is just a parallel proceeding, that it doesn't matter what is in the notice, it doesn't matter what happened to the Planning Commission, it doesn't matter what was asked for by Director Turner, it doesn't matter what is in the memorandum, it doesn't matter what was in the resolution, it doesn't matter what they did, it doesn't matter what we appealed, it doesn't matter what's before you, it just matters what they said, matters what they're telling you now. That cannot be acceptable to the board. That cannot be what Lake County stands for in something so serious that changes people's lives fundamentally, that impacts them economically, that deprives them of a property right. It's what is known as deliberate indifference, deliberate indifference for the deprivation of a property right. That's the analysis that goes to court. Decide for yourselves whether the county is in a strong position with the deliberate indifference and the deprivation of a property right. As we're looking at being asked to, the board being asked to revoke an entitlement of, to revoke a major use permit based on the violation that the county now admits they can't proceed with, and now are claiming it doesn't matter because they can just make something up. My request first, respectfully, is for the board to grant the appeal to UP 19-15. That is my request. In the alternative, if the board will not do that, the board has within its discretion under Chapter 60 the ability to modify the use permit. That's not my first request. I'm not asking for that, but I'm pointing out to the board that there is the capability to modify the use permit rather than to revoke it. I think that there is no legal basis whatsoever for the board to revoke the use permit. The record is clear. This has only ever been about a high severity violation. The county did not notice the appellants, three out of four of them, at all of any violation. They noticed one of the violation that has been essentially dismissed. And that's my request. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions for Mr. Rogaway or comments? Supervisor Green?
To the original point that the Planning Commission's action was taken ultra vires a year ago, you're here today asking for granting of the appeal even though the decision a year ago presumably was outside their jurisdiction. Extending that argument, even if we wanted to grant the appeal, and I can't think where the board's heads are at, we may lack jurisdiction to conduct the hearing today.
Agreed.
So in the event the hearing does not proceed today, where would that leave the case in your view?
So thank you for the question. I concur that there is a jurisdictional issue, and it's, there's a contradiction here. I think that's what the issue is, is that there is an agreement by the county that the Planning Commission was hearing this matter outside of any legal authority to do so. So once that determination has essentially been stipulated, then there shouldn't be anything to appeal. It should essentially just be moot, that there would be no revocation because essentially the revocation, the determination to revoke the use permit was unlawful and that it therefore was never revoked. That's what the legal remedy would be. If the board were to essentially adjourn without making a determination, I think what would happen as a matter of law is that unless a party were to renew some type of motion or to bring it to court or to file another type of administrative appeal, as long as there was the finding that the initial revocation is void by the Planning Commission, then I think there's nothing left to do here. That's my opinion. But I do believe, just what to clarify, I do believe that there is a fundamental legal problem involved with just having the hearing today. I'm not waiving that objection by being here. I just want to make sure that there isn't like a default or something that's entered by my non-presence because I told County Council, as I mentioned, and Director Turner that we've received no notice to the things that were required to have notice for in order for this to be a valid hearing, and that was followed by laughter.
Any other questions or comments? Staff?
Oh, yes. Looking at the penalty section in Chapter 13, and you'll see that is 13.5, there is no part of it that deals with revocation. For revocation to happen, it has to happen under a different chapter, under the chapters dealing with revocation. So to say that it is all tied to 13, that it all has to be 13, has never made sense. We've expressed that. He has to know that. He's read it. Look at the initial notice, and it says for revocation. That was always a different chapter. The findings for high severity violations go specifically to the people, to the persons. And we're not doing that. We're not asking for that. We took a step back from that. Legendary Farms has gotten every bit of due process that anybody could possibly get. The whole purpose of notice is so people understand what they're being either charged with or asked to fix and that they have time to prepare themselves. They've had two years. They've been here since the beginning. Everybody has known. To be accused of obfuscation in this situation is kind of laughable because during this whole presentation, the one thing you did not hear was anything about the actual conduct of why we're here. Not once did you hear anything about the 3,000-plus plants, the uses of the AG buildings, none of that. All that we've been hearing is a word salad trying to accuse everybody here at this table, except Johanna, of lying, of deliberately trying to dilute the arguments.
And if you don't mind, I'm going to take your comment and make sure that we do focus on the issues at hand rather than some of the other interactions that have occurred because I think we have facts in front of us of what is happening. I do want to follow up, and I apologize for that. I just want to make sure that we're not heating up the room about how interactions went or didn't went and that we really focus on the matter at hand here. We have some unpermitted buildings. We had an illegal grow. We have a potential revocation in front of us, and we need to make sure that we recognize what is the right process for us to follow and make sure that we move forward and not side to side. So I do have some questions. One, there's only one notice of violation that I'm aware of, and that notice of violation was done on September 14th, 2022, and it was done to United Investment Ventures, which I believe, please correct me if I'm wrong, because if you want to talk about obfuscation, it's all of the LLCs in different buckets that make it really confusing, but that is the owner of the property is United Investment Ventures. Am I correct on that?
I'm sorry? Who is the owner?
United Investment Ventures is the owner of the property?
No, I don't.
Yes, United Investment Ventures is the sole property owner.
Okay.
And this is something, just one clarification.
Chair, who are you asking? Are you asking staff? Are you asking Mr.?
I will direct questions better. I apologize. Staff, please provide the information on who in United Investment Ventures is that received the notice of violation.
The notice of violation, as you can see in the photos, was handed to Michael Wagner, who was then operating as agent for Legendary Farms. I can double check to see who's written on it, but the pictures that you see.
And I'm just going to go back to the question.
Property owners, if I could just finish.
Please.
Sentence. It is included in the staff report before you on page three. In the beginning, the property was owned by Frank Perez, but in subsequent grant deeds transferring ownership of the property, it's gone back and forth to Justin and Melissa Smith as joint tenants, to United Investment Ventures LLC, to Justin and Melissa Smith, and then Justin Rabbin Smith and Melissa Pat Smith as co-trustees of the Justin and Melissa Smith Living Trust. Most recently, the grant deed that I could find on July 11th, 2024, there were two. So the one that was recorded second was transferring it from United Investment Ventures LLC to the Justin Rabbin Smith and Melissa Pat Smith co-trustees of the Justin and Melissa Smith Living Trust UA dated 10/31/1023. It's my understanding that that is the current entity that owns the property.
And I'm looking for who was the current during the NOV because we can't just update based on who is the current owner, who was the current owner during the NOV.
So on that table, then, the Planning Commission, okay, so go back. So that would be the time of the site visit, which was in 2022. In that time, in 2022 until 2023, United Investment Ventures LLC was the grantee of that latest grant deed. So that was the property owner.
Okay. And so to me, that makes sense that they would have received the NOV because it was not within the premises of the permit, it was within the property itself, and you're dealing with the property owner to deal with these violations.
And our normal procedure would have been to hand that to the agent of the permittee as well as follow up with certified mail to the property owner as well.
And so I see here the code violations that are written on the NOV all relate to Chapter 13. One of them is lack of permitted, just lack of permits. I think it's a general lack of permit statement for Chapter 13, Article 1, Section 13-31E16. And then Chapter 13, Article 7, 50.3, is what points to the high severity violations. That doesn't mean that the whole entire thing is just, it's an addition to the lack of permits, there's the addition of the high severity violations. It's not just that solely. And so I just, I want to highlight that. It does say underneath, but it's not stated in the code violations of Lake County Code, Chapter 21, because the permittee within Chapter 21, which would be the commercial cannabis cultivation, they themselves did not have a violation of their permit. It was a violation within the parcel which then violated the conditions of approval. Am I correct on that?
I would actually dispute that because.
Please do.
Cannabis activity that's not part of the major use permit that takes place into unpermitted structures with unpermitted electrical, I would plant solely within the responsibility of the permittee. Additionally, it does state our conditions that when we do go to inspect, we don't limit it to just the approved little canopy area. We're looking at the parcel because we want to make sure that all activities are in accordance with the approved use permit.
And I'm glad you brought that up. I have it right here. I was able to find, go back to at least September 28th, 2023, for the Planning Commission where it says here in Section L 2, and it's the first bullet after the first paragraph, "The project parcel shall be inspected by the Community Development Department on an annual basis and/or less frequently if approved by the Community Development Director." And the inspection is to find any and all potential issues that would be in, not in accordance with the conditions of approval.
Indeed, and it is beneficial to our department to do so, to take the entire parcel into regard because what we are finding in a couple other of future revocation recommendations are, is an agreement or is an understanding between the property owner, permittee, et cetera, and the people who are cultivating for their permitted cannabis. It's an acknowledgement that in order to get paid, you can go grow over there. You take care of my stuff over here, and you can go grow over there, and the money will be shared.
Objection.
And so I don't know that that's what is happening here. We don't have any evidence to show that that's what's happening. I'm just stating, actually, one of the main benefits of the fact that our conditions of approval do take into account the entire project parcel.
Two points, Supervisors, and I apologize if I'm confusing or if I speak too fast. Please let me know, and I'll slow down or I'll clarify what I've said. Earlier, when I said that there were two parallel processes, I was trying to make clear the fact that there are two code sections that apply in this circumstance, and I apologize if it caused confusion. Chapter 13, as you've noted, Chair, is related to violations for, nuisance violations, right, that are related to the individuals. And that is the chapter that requires a notice of violation. So it would not cite Chapter 21 because it relates to the process of Chapter 13 and notice of violations, that an individual who would be penalized under that ordinance section would be given an opportunity to correct them and not receive per day violations or some other kind of penalty under Chapter 13. Today, we're not asking you to look to the notice of violation for penalizing the individuals who acted in this circumstance. We are asking you to look at the Chapter 1 process, Chapter 21, excuse me, process that relates to a revocation. And a revocation can be based on noted violations, even if there was not a notice of violation and even if there was not a finding of high severity violations because that Chapter 13 process relates to the individuals and penalizing the individuals. Chapter 21 has its own notice process, and that's Article 57, and it is a notice for a hearing. And the individuals who are noticed, it's a wide breadth. There is posted in the newspaper of general circulation, there is posted to neighbors and property owners within a certain 100-foot range. It's a broad notice process, and that would be a notice that there is a consideration of revocation based on noted violations of the permit that applies to that property. And staff not only looks to beyond the cultivation area because they have noted that there may be violations in many circumstances beyond that approved cultivation area, but they look beyond it because your ordinance applies uses to the entire lot. And in the case of cannabis cultivation, your ordinance has a limitation for square footage based on certain other criteria, and it applies to the entire parcel. So they would look at the entire parcel because the conditions apply to the entire parcel. If it is limited to 65,000 square feet of canopy, for example, there cannot be any other canopy on that lot because the lot is permitted 65,000 square feet of canopy. And that's just one example of why you would look at the entire lot. But notice here, the individual notice of violation would not need to be, to meet the, excuse me, would not apply to the Chapter 21 hearing because it is in relation to the Chapter 13 violations for the individuals. And we have already noted that the individuals to whom those violation penalties would apply were not properly noticed, and therefore, we are not asking that Chapter 13 violations be pursued against those individuals. However, the notice requirements for Chapter 21 have been met. I think your board was provided paperwork earlier that showed the posting in the newspaper, the addresses to whom the notice was provided, a declaration as far as posting in the newspaper, so that any interested party would have had proper notice for the revocation, that staff was recommending a revocation based on the notation of violations. And while they may have defined them in their first staff report to the Planning Commission as high severity violations, the fact that an individual or set of individuals had not been found guilty or at least been responsible for those high severity violations does not mean that those high severity violations did not exist. does not mean that those high severity violations did not exist. And the fact that they existed or may have, or that staff is claiming or asserting that they existed is support for a revocation action. And I can, and if any of that was confusing, I can certainly explain.
We started from a bad place. Thank you for trying to help us to get to a better place. In reading, and I'm about to muddy it a little bit more. The violations are what brought us to Chapter 21 for the revocations because you can't get to Chapter 21 just because you feel like going through a revocation process. There has to be violations or conditions of approvals that are not being met and consistently not being met, or something along the lines.
Correct. The violations that staff is asserting for the revocation are violations of the permit conditions. A use was permitted on this lot. That use had criteria that had to be followed in the form of conditions of approval. Staff in their inspection had determined that those conditions were not followed. Regardless of whether or not an individual person had been found responsible for those conditions, they were not followed.
And so the, when, this is not the first conditions of approvals that have not been met or have been violated. What kind of noticing occurs upon a condition of approval found not to be met? Is there a notice of violation? Is there, what occurs at that point?
In general, as we have encountered in the last couple of years.
Because if there's a code violation, I expect that the next step is a notice of violation. And if there's a condition of approval that's not met, what is the next step on that? Is there some official documentation that's provided to the individual?
Yes.
Or to the permittee?
After the inspection, the permittee will receive the inspection report. We come back to the office, finish out, filling out the report. Typically, the planners will consult me if there's some issues, and we decide, okay, are we going to just work with this? Let's let the property owner know. Can we, are these simple ones, you know, like a building permit for this?
Or a lock on a gate.
Our goal is to not bring everything to you for revocation. It's only the more egregious ones. And so if we can meet with the property owner to get it fixed easily, we're not following up with code. If we meet resistance, we're going to get the code out there for the actual paperwork to start on a notice of violation, and the citations will start.
And so this applicant received a report of the inspection with where they did not meet the conditions of approval with expectations of what needed to occur in order to meet conditions of approval? Or what was, what was that situation?
We would have, we did have discussions with them regarding the issues. However, I did not, I did not think that this was one that could just be quickly fixed. It had unpermitted structures where unpermitted activity was taking place. It had 3,000 plants in a totally disconnected portion of the parcel. So it wasn't like a, whoops, I'm, you know, exceeding my square footage or something like that. It was, it was an obvious, purposeful cultivation of unpermitted plants. And so to me, this wasn't a, let's just get it back into, you know, let's just fix it. So I notified, let them know, this is going to go to the planning commission. And as I tell all the people who ask that question, this is going to go to the planning commission, so you'll have your opportunity to present your side. So, because it's not me. I just make the recommendation in compliance with Article 60.12 to bring it to the planning commission with a recommendation of revocation. And so that is what I did.
And so again, just to make clear, documents were submitted to the applicant to let them know that they weren't meeting conditions of approval? And, or was it just verbal?
That part would have been verbal.
Okay.
I think we did send a notice, a letter just saying that it was going to come. But I'd have to actually check my records because I'm not 100% positive about that one. But we did have ongoing discussions.
And in the notice of violations, again, I'm going back to that. It only, it does, it says remove all cannabis plants, but it doesn't mention anything about the buildings at this point in time in the notice of violation itself. I also saw pictures in September 2023 of plants being grown, obviously way beyond the May 21, 2023, but I don't see a notice of violation. Was, was a notice of violation provided at that point in time?
I do not think so. And also, thank you for that because I need an opportunity to correct what I told you. I told the board that building permits had been submitted for greenhouses. That's not accurate. A planning application for the conversion to FPC with building plans were submitted. No building permit application has been submitted at this time.
For the conversion to mixed light?
For the greenhouses, correct.
Okay. I, I, I feel on a personal level that we're, we're getting, what's the right thing to say? I don't know if it's a misuse of the expression, but I feel like somebody, that, somebody's thumbing their nose at us. You have a violation, you put in more plants in September 2023. You still have your buildings up that obviously were used for not good activities that would be permitted for. If it was used for hay in the wrong location, I think that's a different situation. But obviously, with all of the gearing up for indoor, like, that's not good stuff. But I have to, I'm hurting myself here that I'm not sure that we noticed appropriately. And I'd like to get a better understanding because United Investment was the property owner. And if we didn't provide any documentation to the applicant saying, here's your issues, and the notice of violation never mentioned the buildings, there's never a new notice of violation mentioning the new pot grows in September 2023, I feel that I'm saying yes to undocumented things that verbally is not, in my opinion, enough to be able to move forward. What's happening is not appropriate as far as the activity on that property, and I have to make sure and say that. But I'm also not quite comfortable with what I have in front of me unless you can present some better evidence or reason as to why. Because I feel like we need to say today, you have 30 days to get rid of those buildings, and, and so on and so forth, and start that process over for revocation. But right here, all I see is United Investment, not Legendary, and no notice of violation for the other things, just the plants that happened to be gone, from what I understand, fairly quickly after we told them to get rid of it.
I understand your concern, Supervisor. The, I think that the issue here is confusing. Notice to the individual for a, for a penalty that would be applied to that individual and notice about the misuse of a property. So in the case of a revocation, put aside the notice of violation because that is Chapter 13, and we have, we're not addressing Chapter 13 today because we are not handling notice of violations for a nuisance violation. You are not going to be applying penalties for anything under that ordinance section. What we are asking today is for your consideration of the application of Chapter 21 for a permit revocation. A permit is issued after analysis, giving approval of a lot's use under the ordinance that your board has adopted. There is a permitted use, in this case, it's a cannabis cultivation. And that use after analysis and review is restricted by certain conditions of approval. Those conditions of approval are the notice of how this property is to be appropriately used. Anyone who uses that property, regardless of who it may be, has to follow the permitted use of that property. It is their obligation to make sure that the way they're using the property is accurate and correct. If it is not used appropriately, if the, if there is no permit, they don't get a permit. If there is a permit and they don't take the steps to learn what the appropriate use that is allowed under that permit may be, then that property is being inappropriately used under Chapter 21 as per the use permit approved, which means that it doesn't matter who used the property inappropriately. The appropriate, because we're not determining responsible persons. We're just determining whether or not that, that permit was followed as approved. And if your board can, can determine, based on the evidence provided by staff, that there were violations of this permit, then a revocation is appropriate. The notice applied under Chapter 21 for a revocation is, as I said, under Article 57. And Article 57 has very, various ways in which notices to be achieved, including notice by publication, notice mailed to everybody, to a number of neighbors in the vicinity, as well as the property itself. Anybody in use of the property should have had notice. They could come to the county and check the permits for permitted uses. The conditions of approval are the notice for what is appropriate use of that property for that particular kind of use. When you have nuisance violation under Chapter 13, it is very different. It's associated to the individual. You have to identify the appropriate individual because they will be individually penalized. Usually, it's finances. That is not what we're asking here. We're asking Chapter 21 revocation. Staff has noted in their inspection that the permitted use for this property has been engaged in incorrectly, in violation of the use permit. And because of that reason, they have brought it to the planning commission, and now your board, asking for a revocation because the conditions were violated. And notice, as I said, was, is in Article 57, and that notice was provided. Not only that, but the parties here who, who are opposing the, the revocation have been at every hearing. They have, they have filed numerous PRA requests with county. They have provided numerous filing documents, or essentially, for lack of a better word, letters, like the one that you received today, the thick packet. They have had every opportunity, they knew, they have had every opportunity to comment. They have spoken at both the planning commission and before your board. So notice was not ineffective here for this revocation.
Additionally, in our records, we do have the Ag exempt building permit application, which the applicant was Melissa Smith for United Investment Ventures. So I'm not sure where we could have been informed that United Investment Ventures would not have included the permittee, Melissa Smith, who's Legendary Farms. So when we presented the notices to the agent at that time at the site visit, the permittee had already excused herself and was not there. But we have paperwork in our records that connects her. It's signed by her on behalf of United Investment Ventures. So I'm not sure how we would have known that it would not have reached in our, in our outreach, in our mailings and notification procedure that, that anyone would have been excluded.
I don't disagree. However, that's the unfortunate nature of the inbred LLC situation that we're dealing with, where there's five names on five different LLCs. And I really, again, I feel like these people are laughing at us by growing even in September 2023, are still having these buildings up. But at the same time, I'm looking for a storyline that I'm not seeing documented that makes me feel comfortable. You can have the same name in five different companies. That's good. But if it's one company and one name, I feel we don't have the documentation to show that it was submitted properly. And, and this is the unfortunate situation of what we're dealing with because.
All I have are, my report to the board are my testimony that we did have ongoing conversations regarding those structures.
Yeah.
The, Ms. Smith was well aware that the structures were problematic for a very long period of time, and it has not been resolved.
But I also don't see a notice of violation for that, and that's, that's a problem for me.
A notice of violation would not be required for a permit violation because you're, that, there is already notice of a permit.
No, because that would be on, but, but, I'm going to stop talking. I, the property is not acting appropriately. And I would love to see moving forward with what's being requested here, but I am stuck at this moment that the property owner did not receive a violation of a building, but yet we're using that building to do something like a revocation. If everything was right here, then I would say it's been documented. We've taken step by step, but I can't help but feel like if I'm auditing this, that I'm seeing pieces of the story missing in documentation.
Right. Well, under, under Chapter 21, there is not a requirement for a notice of violation. That is a Chapter 13 process. And in relation to, to nuisance violations. And nuisance violations in, in that Chapter 13 section, there is language that states that any, any violation that is not already covered by a permit would be subject to that particular code section. So the violations related to a permit are addressed in Chapter 21. And the permit itself is notice of what is required, what actions are required. And by default, anything outside of those actions would be a violation. So the person engaging in those activities is either not looking up the permit, which means that they are not concerned with knowing what they can legally do as part, as for that particular use on that property, or they don't care, that, that they are acting outside of that permit, permission, permit condition requirements. If you are taking an action on a property, you have to ask the county. You have to ask the county, is this permissible? And what permits do I need for this, for this to be allowed? If you don't do that, you are acting outside of, you are acting in violation of the ordinance, and that, and that would be an unpermitted action. It would be a Chapter 13 nuisance violation. If you are getting a permit and you look that permit up because it's already attached to the land and you bought it for that reason, or you are applying for one, you will know at the issuance of that permit what you are allowed to do. So if you are acting outside of that, you will already know you are in violation.
That's.
So the issue here, so Chapter 21 does not require a notice of violation. Chapter 21 requires notice for a hearing, which would give the, which would give the property itself notice. So it would be posted, it would be mailed to the last known address for contact for that particular property. It's oftentimes, I think it includes the, the person who, who pays the taxes. And I think community development, although Director Turner can speak to this more, also includes the last known address of permittees and, and other people involved in the process of gaining the permit, if they have that. And it also includes neighbors. So what it does not require in Chapter 21 for a revocation is a notice of violation because that is not what's at issue here. What issue here, what's at issue here is that a permit is being violated. The person acting under the permit has the obligation to understand what actions they're allowed to do. If they're not acting within that, they are in violation of the permit, and your, and staff can bring an, a request that that permit be revoked because there are violations. Staff has brought a number of violations to your board. They don't include just the, the buildings. They also include extra plants and other kinds of, of things like, you know, electricity and plumbing and a number of things that you saw in the presentation. So your board hears this de novo. The staff has presented violations that they have noted, and, and they have asked that a revocation under 20, on Chapter 21 be approved. So I'm not sure where the disconnect is.
One, one, one second, Nicole. Chair Sabatia, I think what you're looking for, it's not going to be called a notice of violation. It does take the form of the notice of hearing. For Chapter 21 revocations, that's the notice they receive. And it's noted on there that they'll receive a staff report at least 72 hours before said hearing, listing everything that's going to be presented there. So that's how, if they somehow did not know what they would be going up on revocation for, they would have access to the staff report listing out everything. And that's what serves as the notice. Outside of that, nothing else is required in our Chapter 21.
I'm going to be quiet right now and let other board members speak and ask questions if there are any. Supervisor Green?
Thank you. In the, in the interest of time, and so we don't have to come back here. I do think one approach. I do think if we were to proceed at all today, I think granting the appeal in full would be the only. I think granting the appeal in full would be the only lawful path. I'm concerned, to be honest, about some of the statements made by staff. Not in any snarky, like we're being mean, but if the premises in the parcel are being equated here under the county ordinance, that's very different than what state law does. One reason state licensing does distinguish premises from parcels is because of the never-ending string of LLCs. It gets hard to assign responsibility when you have, in this case, a 40-acre-plus parcel with not one, but two use permits on it and other types of activities going on. The assertion here is that the permit holder here either caused the violations or should have known somehow, even though there's no evidence before, is that the perma-tee had control and custody over the rest of the parcel. Even if they had noticed it, they have no legal authority necessarily to proceed. And I don't see anything baked in the use permit that creates an affirmative obligation for them to police other parcels, parts of the parcel. That said, I hear in comments from my colleagues, and the skepticism rightfully expressed by staff, these were serious violations that occurred. And just as the Planning Commission expressed frustration with that and really desired to have somebody held accountable for those violations, they couldn't get there, and we may express similar frustration here today. And because of that frustration, I'm a little worried we may take actions that may not be legally supportable. And we'll continue this conversation either at this venue or in the Superior Court for no good reason. I want to notice that because if we were to proceed today in a slightly different tack, I know staff is recommending revocation, but there's also a procedure for modification of a use permit within the same section of the ordinance. I'm concerned about the violations that occur just as much as everyone else. They are staggering. But the whole reason we do permitting and the whole reason we have nuisance ordinances is not to be punitive, it's to bring properties into compliance. It's to look for ways to bring our perma-tees into compliance. And unfortunately, they've been fighting this battle so much, they've dropped a couple other balls, including the conversion to mixed light. I don't need an immediate answer, but before we take a vote, and I'm going to suggest, maybe we can take a lunch break so y'all can think about it. If you would be open to reviewing proposed language to modify the use permit that would impose additional requirements upon the perma-tees, including more frequent inspections, including legalization of the unpermitted buildings to the extent possible, and triggers for additional discipline should additional violations be made. My question would be, one would be staff amenable to even considering such language for modification. And similarly to the appellant, if we want to tighten up the use permit, make sure we hold their feet to the fire on the mixed light conversion, make sure we get 3103 in there for at least the next two years while the application for the modification of the use permit is pending, et cetera, et cetera. So I do have a framework in mind that, short of a full-blown revocation, but also short of a full-blown granting of the appeal, if we could find that middle ground and find some language that the parties would agree to, to modify the use permit, that would be the motion I would be interested in making, because I don't want to come back here under a different set of rules. I can't proceed in good faith, as presented here today, without granting the full appeal, or at least trying to. And I do think some accountability is required here. And I think we have the ability to do that by taking notice of what has happened, taking notice of the complexity of the parties involved and the property involved, acknowledging state licensing and your local permitting process have distinctions between them that have created some confusion here, at least in terms of legal responsibility for the violations. But what can we do to right the horse? And maybe you're not there, you know, maybe we just can't get there. But that's the offer. I have five bullet points that I think would be lovely modifications to the use permit that would definitely enhance accountability, that would create sanctions for further violations, but would also set them firmly on a path to compliance. So I'll leave it at that. That's my kind offer.
Were you planning to respond or make a statement?
I'd be happy to. So this was our first revocation that I've ever seen done, and so I did give it considerable thought, went back and forth. Is this the right way to proceed, thinking not just about this particular matter or this issue, but considering it as establishing a pattern for future revocation recommendations? It was due to the significant, purposeful violations of the conditions of approval of what the Planning Commission had originally approved for this operation that caused me to consider the recommendation for revocation as appropriate. That being said, I serve at the pleasure of the board. If it's the will of the board that we find a way to negotiate, I'm not sure what that means for the unpermitted cannabis cultivation or the cannabis activity taking place in those structures, that it wasn't just, oops, we didn't get building permits. It's we're using them for our cannabis permit, though it's not part of our cannabis permit. But if the, if the board would like us to seek resolution with the client, we will, we will do so.
Very much. Vice Chair Crandall.
Yes. And so you just said a statement that I was going to ask a question about. And because I've heard, you know, through all this, and I know you said, just let me know if you were confused, because I'm not. I just want to know if I heard right, because you're mentioning the note of, notice of violation. And then I've heard the conditions of approval be mentioned, that that's basically like the roadmap to how you're supposed to move forward. And in being a planning commissioner, I remember going through this process with people that were contesting permits and saying, and just continuously getting us through a point, one being the Valley Oaks. I don't know if anyone remembers that one. Finally, we got to a list of conditions of approval. And that got, that was a really extensive, long list, but that was a roadmap as to what they had to do, not just that, but others as well. And so what I'm hearing is the fact that they didn't basically go by the conditions of approval puts this situation where it's at right now.
That is correct. After the permit is approved by the Planning Commission, the perma-tee goes over the conditions of approval, and that's your roadmap for operations, along with the property management plan that was cited there and the site plan. They're all cited in the conditions of approval. When you construct two buildings without permits, one in a location that was not proposed, so two buildings and neither of them with electrical permits, I think it would be reasonable to assume you would know you were doing so outside of your conditions of approval.
An A7 under this one that you've given me for conditions of approval.
Prior to cultivation, all buildings must have building permits. All new buildings should be constructed with permits. That applies to that one directly. The lack of conversion also is in the conditions of approval.
Let's go ahead and open it up for public comment. Anybody who did the oath, you are eligible to come on up. I'm not going to pick which one goes first. Please come on up to the microphone. And please put your hand down so you can get some blood back down to your arm. We will not ignore you. Yeah, for public comment, we're going to be doing three minutes. Please.
John Moss, I have, want to, puts a bug in your ear that you may be looking at the person that is not responsible for the notice. I believe, I know things about Frank Perez that point to him. I know I worked with him with the farmers market. He is known as a fence.
So I just want to quickly add that Frank Perez is not...
Meet with her and give her the information that I have.
I do not believe he is on the agenda today for us to discuss. And so I think that it's...
That's why I want to meet with a lawyer. I want to meet with her. Thank you.
And that is up to her to decide what to do.
He is the unpermitted owner.
I would rather we stay within the context of what's on the agenda.
It is on the agenda. He is involved. He's the original person that had the property. Thank you. I want to be on record before I go to the higher authorities to tell you that you're not looking at the right person.
We're done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
I've been coming to these meetings now for two years. And one of the main reasons I've been here is because I feel some fault to why this has all happened. And I'd like to explain real quick with a quick thing. I'm 64 years old. I've never been arrested. I've never been in the back of a cop car. I have no criminal record whatsoever. And that can be, I give you permission to look at my record.
Now that you've said that, could we get your name, please?
Frank James Perez.
Thank you.
Okay. I introduced Mr. Torado. I'm probably pronouncing his name wrong. He worked for me, and he told me eventually, and I told this to the planning department, but I didn't get to tell you guys. He told me that he was interested in growing things for the local restaurants around here that we did before. And in that area where he was growing, we were the first permitted in 2015 by this county to grow medical marijuana there. He was never told to grow any kind of marijuana there. He was supposed to be doing the herbs and spices for the restaurants locally. That's what he told me. So I introduced him to the, to the Smiths to get him in there. And he went south. And I think this was a conspiracy because one of the guys that knows the owners here had a disagreement with them and went to Maria and told her a lot of stuff, and this is what's causing this axe to get grinded. Only Maria knows this. I know Maria, I've never had any problems with her. She's a good person and everything, but sometimes when you listen to people, it's not all what it's all about. And I wanted that to be, you know, to let you guys know. And I really mean this. I'm very proud to be 64 years old and have no criminal record whatsoever. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Michael, Michael Wagner. This, this process has been going on for years now. And one of the things that I think has brought us to today is the Planning Commission hearing all by itself. And especially since Michael actually watched this Planning Commission hearing, they repeatedly said that because there was no responsible party, they had to cast the net broadly and move it forward as it was. Was that your understanding, Mr. Green? Okay. So because there is no responsible party to be found is why they went ahead and pushed all of us, myself included, to the responsible parties and brought us to your board through the action that we wound up going through. Now, with that, the responsible party and the question about the responsible party, when that was brought in front of the commission, and the commission asked if that person had been contacted, and the answer is yes, both our department and law enforcement has attempted to contact these people repeatedly. And then when the facts of the matter come out through two separate public information requests, two separate ones, because the first one wasn't enough. They went back and did it again, and they searched everything, from personal cell phones to law enforcement, to the entirety of the county. And no one had ever once attempted to contact the person who was the responsible party, the person who should have taken, who should have taken the brunt of all of this. The county didn't even attempt. But they were told, the Planning Commission made their ruling based on the fact that those people were told, that they were told that they had tried to contact him, that he had absconded, and they couldn't, couldn't find him, couldn't talk to him. They made their entire ruling based on that. And that was absolutely either incorrect or a straight-out lie, one of the two. That, to me, is just astounding. Procedure, process, all of that set aside. You know, we've all been working on cannabis for a long time here. The, the question for me is how much time and resources are we using to take away legal cannabis in this county? How much money are we spending to do that? I don't at all disagree with the board that these were egregious. They were violations, right, that some kind of disciplinary action must happen. And absolutely, that should come in the form of monetary, because it's America, right? Money. People get fined. And if you look at the DCC, that's exactly what they do, and the fines increase, right? If somebody's not paying attention, okay, well, first it's a thousand, then it's 20,000, right? Third time, bam, you're out. But it's very clear what those costs and fines are. And ultimately, this is not, in my mind, and I could be wrong, but I think in the best interest of this county, to take away legal operators...
Please finish.
Instead, I think that we should, I think we should fine people.
Please, please finish. Thank you. And sir, you're not a member of the public. I'll get back to you to make sure that you have your final comments before we entertain what we will be doing. So I want to make sure the public has the ability to speak before I come back. And so anyone else wish to speak from the public? There's no hands in Zoom, no one moving. So I'm going to close the public hearing. And then I do want to come back for final comments from both. I'm going to start with Mr. Rogoway and come back to CDD, and then hopefully, we can make a decision here of what it is that we need to do.
Yes, thank you. I approached the podium essentially to provide a citation to the board with respect to the assertion that there is no notice requirement for the Chapter 21 proceedings. So what I'm looking at is Lake County Code. It's within Chapter 13, 13-3, is within the definitions, 13-3.3.1. And if you look down at subsection 6, violations, sorry, this is for nuisances, and it includes in the definition, one who violates any condition imposed by a prior discretionary land use approval pursuant to Chapter 21 of the Lake County Code. So within Chapter 13 is included the type of violation that county council argues is separate from Chapter 13. And further, if you look down at, bear with me again, Section 13-6, this section pertains to the notice of nuisance in order to abate, which is what is issued always by the county, as far as I know, for all the matters that I've been involved with, which is many. That's what the county issues when there is a nuisance violation subject to Chapter 21, because of course, if there's going to be a Chapter 21 revocation proceeding, it has to be predicated on something. It has to be predicated on a violation of some sort. The assertion that the conditions of approval alone provide notice of a violation is something I've never heard or contemplated before. It's a, it's a specious legal contention that is, I argue, without merit, without authority. If you notice, members of the board, there is no citation. There's no legal authority that's provided. When we hear argument from county council as to Chapter 21 not containing the notice provision for the violation, well, that's true by omission, because what's being omitted from that is Chapter 21 is addressing the hearing itself. The section that was discussed is the hearing itself. The Chapter 13 is what discusses the nuisance, and that is what would address the violations of the conditions of approval of discretionary use permit, as I just read. Anything with respect to the buildings that have been at issue here also contained within Chapter 13-3, and then 13-6, has the real definition, not just of like that there is a nuisance in order to abate, but 6.1 has the contents and how, what's supposed to be included in that. And it's substantial language that is there. Looking down at 6.2, service of notice... Looking down at 6.2, service of notice of nuisance in order to abate. Again, substantial language that goes into that before it gets into hearing procedures. And of course, the photograph that was circulated for all of us is nothing other than that notice of nuisance order abatement being given to Mr. Wagner. So county council's contention is flat wrong, based on nothing. No authority contradicted by the ordinance, contradicted by their own photograph that they circulated here. So my request, again, just to reiterate that briefly, is for the board to grant the appeal in its entirety. Secondarily, although not my request, but an option, as has been mentioned by Supervisor Green, is a modification. And I can tell the board that there is nothing controversial about getting the conversion for mixed light, for doing the conversion from outdoor to mixed light. That's not an issue. The issue is that there's been a violation, a revocation proceeding occurring for two years. So I don't think that that's going to be a problem. I don't think that these types of concerns are things that the court, sorry, that the board has discussed are things that are controversial to appellate. So I think that there is a way to reasonably accommodate the concerns from the board to make sure that there is the, the character of the property is sufficient for the board's expectations of what is expected here in the county. And that can be accomplished certainly without revoking the use permit, contrary to every single legal authority that there is. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Want to pass it on to CDD for final comments?
Thank you.
Or staff, either or. Didn't mean to choose who was speaking.
That's fine. I just wanted to clarify the citations that were just provided. The citations for Chapter 13 apply to nuisances and nuisance violations. And as I've said in the past, the facts can support both, a revocation and a nuisance violation. In this case, staff noted a nuisance violation and served a notice for that under Chapter 13. As I said earlier, we are not asking you to act on that. You did in the prior, the prior meeting on this issue that we asked that that be, that that appeal be approved. The section that was just cited in Chapter 13 states that if upon making a reasonable determination that a nuisance exists as defined in just Chapter 13, the enforcement officer shall cause a notice of nuisance in order to abate to be served as defined in Chapter 13. Now, if you move to Chapter 21 for the ordinance that governs when a revocation is brought to your board or the planning commission, in the findings, the three findings listed that you may find are grounds for a revocation. Number three in 60.11A, number three, it lists that you may also find a revocation, find for a revocation if a nuisance has also been found. So Chapter 21 does not intertwine with Chapter 13 in the way that was presented. A nuisance, if a nuisance is found, if a violation is, a notice of violation is served under Chapter 13 and a nuisance is found, then that can be used to support an action of revocation under Chapter 21. It is not required that you have the finding of a nuisance against an individual under Chapter 13 to find that there are violations sufficient to support a revocation under Chapter 21.
Just a quick question. I know the answer, but I'm going to ask the question. Are there things in the conditions of approvals that can be violated that are not a nuisance?
It depends.
Which has 4290 compliance or things of the kind?
Yes, because there are things that apply to, say, other laws. I think there are conditions and there are parts of the conditions of approval that require the, anyone engaging in that permitted use gain any necessary permissions from other agencies and things like that. That would, a nuisance violation applies only to certain violations of your ordinance. So there are some things in the conditions that would not be.
Right. Just briefly, I would remind the board that you are hearing this de novo, brand new, to make any decision that you see fit, regardless of what the planning commission may have found. If you think they made the wrong call, you can go against them. But if you find that there is enough here to show that this permit should be revoked, then that finding can be made. If there's questions as to whether or not that evidence exists, I'd be more than happy to answer them. But the plants were there, the buildings were there and being misused. And if we wait to see solely direct evidence of maybe seeing the Smiths themselves out there farming the illegal plants, we will never revoke anything because it will almost always be circumstantial evidence. That's the nature of these things. If we allow ourselves to get tied into knots about LLCs and names when we all know the parties involved, who have been served, who are the noted owners, we'll never be able to revoke anything and we'll just continually get ran over. I ask that if you do have a question about any of this, look again to the pictures involved. Ask Maria a question and she'll show you. They were egregious in their actions against the county. This permit should not stand. It should be revoked. If there is a legal reason to go forward, they can, and I'm sure they will, appeal it to the Superior Court and we'll hear it all over again. But the evidence before you is enough. This permit shouldn't stand.
Director Turner?
Thank you. In 2022, code enforcement and planning staff performed a site visit that is just like any of the over 120 site visits they're performing now during the summer months. The inspection started at the beginning of the property where we're checking for 4290 regulations such as NOx boxes and things like that, as well as prominent postings of the state license. They proceeded to observe activities that were clearly not part of the project, such as 3,300 cannabis permits with no tags and not part of the approved canopy area. Two unpermitted structures, evidence, these aren't, like if it's just a shed, we're not going to consider that a nuisance. We're going to get a permit or a zoning clearance. But these were two 5,000-square-foot metal structures, as well as evidence of cannabis operations going on in those structures. In 2023, they returned and found other violations, including the lack of conversion to mixed light, which would be in conformance with the Lake County Code and their conditions of approval. On August 27th, this board did separate the responsible persons of high severity violations from the overall appeals and directed staff, that would be me, to come back today focusing on the revocation of the use permit. And that's the presentation that I showed you today, is what staff found on their site visits, the violations that were occurring, and the process through Article 60 through which a revocation is possible. That's all I have for you today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Vice Chair Crandall.
A last question, actually, just question and then just a discussion about after my question. So with a permit, if a permit is given to a business or whoever, and then that business or whoever sells that land, which I know happens frequently in our county, and a new owner takes over, obtains the land and operates under that permit and breaks it, what happens? Is it the permetee that we went, that we gave it to, or is it the new owner?
Thank you. Yeah, use permits follow the land regardless of ownership. And so the approval, the conditions of approval would stand no matter if the property is transferred to a different owner, whatever. And that does happen. In cannabis-related permits, we just make note of the file that there's a new owner of the permit or a new permetee. It's no big deal. It doesn't impact the environment because the understanding is that those conditions of approval are to be maintained. Should the previous, or should the future property owners decide they want to amend? It's the same, it's the same process as if it did not change ownership. Should the project, or should the permetee desire amendments to that project? They come to the community development department and we work with them on that.
Thank you for that. And lastly, you know, I'm just throwing this out there and it might be something that's not, will be able to be considered for this. But when you look into 49.2 of the ordinance, the most recent ordinance, amount of administrative penalties imposed, were there fines on each plant that were already out, that were found?
We did not assess fines on the plants this time.
I mean, because I just heard something about fines. And I mean, we're talking about 3,000 plants and 51 or more plants would be 500 per plant, which would equal 1.5 million. I mean, that might be something we consider. I heard that brought up. I'm just throwing that out there.
That is one of the options that is in the code. We did not pursue that with them.
Can we still?
I think the timeline would not lend.
Just throwing it out there because I know it was brought up. So I'm just thinking.
But we will keep it in note for future reference.
Supervisor Simon.
Muddy water, unclear, there's no doubt about that. This is the, as you said, the first revocation hearing that has at least got in front of us. So not as confusing as can be. But, you know, I'd like to simplify things. Two questions, well, three. I had one question heard today in the hearing that code enforcement showed up to the property, asked to enter the properties and were denied. What was the date on that?
That was the first site visit on 2022 where the staff, code enforcement and building staff requested entry into the two 5,000-square-foot metal buildings and were denied at that time.
And then needed to get a warrant to go back in? How?
The next day, when staff returned with law enforcement and law enforcement requested strongly access to those two structures, it was granted at that time.
Thank you. I just need to clarify that for myself. It comes down to, you know, for me, I will just say, working through the process today, following the use permits that we provide for cannabis, for legal cannabis activity here in Lake County. It's been talked about, it's laid out correctly. What can happen on that property if you get these permits to make sure to do it? Not asking anyone to police them, but knowing your environment and what's happening on the parcel is really important to keeping that alive and moving forward for a successful business activity. I think we have the opportunity, two questions. Can we revoke the permit? I think yes. And was notice given? Yes. So for me, I think in the information provided today, I was hoping we'd never get to a point like this. But I'm not going to argue back and forth one way or the other. Violations occurred, plants were found on the property, buildings were found on the property. We have applications saying they were only going to store tractors, hay and equipment. It's written directly in there and signed, you know, for those permits that were asked for, for some of those buildings. So I'll wait and see what the rest of the board is going to do with this. But I just ready to move forward today.
Supervisor Green?
Just for clarity, for those attending, county council is sitting in a different capacity than council sitting at the table on behalf of CDD. I have not heard from county council. I did share by email some suggestions for modification language. So my first question is, regardless of other statements, is if we are to proceed under this hearing under Chapter 21, is modification a thing? Is it within discretion of this board to offer a proposed modification of the use permit as opposed to a full-blown revocation?
Yes, as part of your board's discretion, as it relates to this appeal, your board may grant the appeal in part and modify the permit subject to specified conditions that your board may impose.
And having spent some time hatcheting together those ideas, I don't know how useful they would be to pursue based on the continuing assertions by staff and council representing staff that other than the fact the violations occurred on the property, no other showing is needed to determine the responsibility of the holder of the use permit for that activity. And again, I want to distinguish very strongly how state licensing differs from this process. And although they do allow permit revocation of a state license, it's distinguished as a serious violation and you need to have knowledge and intent. And one reason I think they baked that in there is the constitutionality of taking a serious sanction. A permit revocation is a serious sanction, depriving the appellant of both the use of the property and future income that derives from that. So I can't speak to the wisdom of the state licensing process or how it developed, but I see themes there that are utterly absent from our ordinance. And so the more you stick to your guns on this ordinance and what is required or not required to show before we take sanctions against a permetee, I got to ask myself the question, is the bigger flaw with the appellant or with the ordinance that they're being subject to penalties under? I would like to propose a modification that would, among other things, set a firm deadline for them to submit an application to modify their use permit to mixed light cultivation. Granted, the deadline has come and passed of ordinance 3103, but also granted, they've been fighting this thing for two-plus years. That would be one bullet point. Assuming they timely present such an application, permetee may conduct state license cultivation using hoop houses constructed and operated in full compliance with ordinance 3103 until such time as the mixed light application is approved or until December 31, 2026, whichever comes first. And that mixed light cultivation shall not commence prior to issuance of the modified county use permit, state mixed light cultivation license and any other approvals that may be required. That in no event will any unpermitted cannabis cultivation occur on the licensed premises or on any other portions of the property located at 2290 Sota Bay Road in Lakeport, APN 008-010-29 for any personal or commercial use. And any such outdoor cannabis cultivation by any person, regardless of purpose or purported authority and regardless of the presence of any hoop houses or lack thereof, may thereupon be considered grounds for revocation of use permit in 1915 without further notice or hearing. And finally, that any unpermitted building shall be removed or brought into compliance with imposition of treble fees where authorized by the Lake County Code, regardless of the intended use of the buildings by permetee or other parties. And that permetee will expressly acknowledge that ag-exempt buildings constructed for storage shall not be used for commercial cannabis activities. I think that would strengthen things that are already basically stated in the use permit. I think it would put permetee on notice that even if they don't have the ability to police it, that their permit will be at risk if the property owner or other parties engage in unpermitted cannabis cultivation. Absent consideration of the possibility of the modification of the use permit, the only action I see before me is to make a motion to grant the appeal in full.
At this moment, I just want to pause. I'll come back to you if you truly want to offer that motion so we can look to see if there's a second. I know that Director Turner wanted to speak, but I do want to bring it to Supervisor Pyska because in my opinion, I'm not interested in any adjustments. And I don't want to give time if there's, if that's the same opinion being shared by the majority of the board in response to that. And so I'm feeling that that is the will of the board to not go in that direction at this moment in time. So Supervisor Pyska, please.
Yeah, I have no interest in any modification or negotiation at all. This is our, this is our first revocation. It's been a bumpy road. I think there's been a lot learned. But I think it's clear that that is the direction that we need to move. There's been zero effort to come into compliance and make any of these issues right. And this is, we are in a place of setting precedent. And I think, I think there's been a lot of lessons learned here, too, as we move forward. You know, there was a question asked of how much money we've spent trying to keep these applicants from growing. I think we've put a lot of effort into, into building this industry and supporting this industry. And to see these, you know, the no-fuming and the egregiousness of this, like that's very disheartening of what we have put forward to make this a viable industry here. So I'm ready to move forward.
Please, Vice Chair Crandall.
Yes, no, I do want to state a couple of things. And Mr. Perez, Frank, thank you for coming up and stating what you said about not knowing the gentleman or what he was moving forward with and you took responsibility for it, appreciate that. And the statement that Mr. Wagner, you made about charging fines, I really liked that idea, it's just too late. And if any attorney would probably say, well, on what basis if we made that decision? And so I don't, I know I can't just say, hey, let's do that. Because if I were you, the first thing I would do was file complaints on that aspect. So can't go there now. So the only thing I can think of is to go with what we have before us. And, you know, Supervisor Green, you, myself, I know Mr. Perez, I know Mr. Wagner, we're all a part of developing this ordinance during, during those timeframes. I remember in those lengthy meetings that we had as planning commission, these gentlemen would come up, you would come up and talk about all of these different things and aspects that we would look at when it came to crafting this, right? I mean, I'm just making sure that, you know, we remember that timeframe because it's unfortunate that sometimes these things are new and we have to go through them, but, I mean, we have what we have before us. And the only thing we can do to correct that is after we deal with this. It's unfortunate, but.
Mr. Roy Way, I'm going to ask you to sit down. We're done with comments from yourself, our staff, and we're just finalizing up here at the Board of Supervisors. I, I'm thankful for all the comments. It's always difficult to deal with something for the first time. There's a lot of learning moments. I, I do believe that my personal learning moment that I would like to see is all can, all inspections result in documentation with a, you have thirty days to comply to this or it could lead to revocation. That way, that gives us all the documentation we need to fully support one hundred percent. There are notice of violations here that were provided to the landowner at that time. I would like to believe that in the future, we look at our, and I'm not saying you don't, but I want to make sure that we treat our cannabis industry like any other local business where we give them the documentation saying, hey, your landowner is messing everything up for you, you're about to lose your permit. To give them that chance to also be a force to help make the change. Granted, in today's situation, the landowner is the permutee with a different business entity, but if there is separation, I want to make sure that there's always going to be that, that, that notification because I think that would be helpful. I don't want to see my business name put out on the newspaper that there's a potential revocation coming in a public hearing. I would have liked to have something in documentation prior to that rather than just to the landowner. And so I know there were conversations, but verbal to me is very different than in documentation, especially with providing documentation to decide how to move forward. So I think like, to me, the learning moment is documentation because it, it's helpful in these situations. The fact that there's still buildings there, the fact that you planted more pot in September of two thousand twenty-three after the deadline, the fact that you haven't submitted and now you're claiming you didn't have time because of the revocation, May twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three was the deadline to transition. In two thousand twenty-two, probably already too late at that point to submit an application and have it timely so you can get it processed. This process only started as of September twenty-third, like specifically at this level. But I think already at the time of the inspection, it was, you should have already submitted something. We, we gave you ample time to be able to transfer and transition and there seemed to be a lack of effort, there seemed to a lack of care about the community around you by continuing to plant more when you're not allowed to. And so today, I, I again, love to see more documentation in the future. I think we need to have a set way of dealing with all the applicants in the same way of, here's your inspection report with the final comments on, you're good, or you have thirty days to fix these things or else this could lead to. I think that would be great. But today, I, I cannot disallow this revocation when you've been basically kind of laughing at us and laughing at the community around you, just doing your own thing. I, I apologize that in America, you really have to ask permission for certain things on your property and you just didn't care to follow the rules and do the right things. And so in this county, we have rules and if we let this one slide, then we're going to get laughed at for just letting people slide. And I'm, I'm not going to do that today. So I'm, I'm, I think we have learning moments, but I think that today we move forward. Looking for a, a motion.
Just very briefly before the motion, we are making a record here. So should have known, we're sending a message. Again, there's not a shred of evidence that has been presented here that would make Justin and Melissa Smith responsible for the violations. And I grant the difficulty that this ordinance poses if we would impose that type of requirement. But.
And we are not.
There's no substantial evidence, there's no preponderance of evidence, there's just nothing. So other than the fact that we want to hold people, they accountable, you don't know that they are the proper they and you don't know that.
This is not a deemed responsible situation anymore. This is an issue of conditions of approval that allows for the inspection of properties to ensure that there are no violations because this is a land use permit, not a person special permit.
A distinction without a difference, so take your motion. But this is going to go somewhere and I have a sneaking suspicion of what's going to happen up there. There is no evidence that Justin or Melissa Smith are responsible for the conduct and on that basis, there is no rational reason for this board to revoke the use permit.
Thank you for your comment. Looking for a, a motion? Please.
So, Mr. Chair, members of the board, so in light of what has transpired since a previous hearing on August twenty-seventh, and on the record, there appears to be more than one request for appeal, one that was filed via correspondence of September one and one that was received by CDD staff on October four, both, both falling under two thousand twenty-three. The one from September of two thousand twenty-three references the notices of violation and your board has already made determinations of that, of that, and that's under chapter thirteen. So the one, but there's also the, the notice of appeal that was filed on October fourth, two thousand twenty-three. All of that is for purposes of background for your board so that for purposes of this motion, your board may move for an intended decision granting the appeal in part and denying the appeal in part, and that would correspond to those two. The motion being this, with this intended decision to grant the appeal in finding no high severity violations under Lake County Code, chapter thirteen, as to the appellants. And the denial in part of the appeal would consist of the denial of appeal AB twenty-three dash zero three and revoke major use permit UP nineteen fifteen based on the findings that were stated on page thirteen of the September eighteen, two thousand twenty-three staff report to the plant, submitted to the planning commission. In particular, those are findings one, two, three and five because that's what CDD is relying on. And direct staff to prepare draft findings of fact and decision. So it would be a granting in part as to the high severity violation appeal, and then it would be a denial in part as to the revocation under appeal, revocation of the major use permit.
And are those two separate motions or can we do that in one motion?
It can be done in one and there will be, with the direction of staff as part of your motion, there would be, staff would prepare for draft findings and fact and decision for your board's consideration within that forty-five day limit.
I have a question for you. Can we add in there anything regarding the?
Go ahead.
Can we add anything in there regarding the buildings needed to be dealt with within a certain timeframe? Because I'm, I'm not happy that we're still dealing with something after all this time of interaction.
And mainly because.
And direct staff that within thirty days, these buildings need to be either taken down or brought to code or certain, what, what, what can we do about that?
So that direction can be made separate from your board's motion as it relates to the appeal or appeals. That direction of staff to explore or to look into ways on how to address the, the building situation can be given by your board by direction.
Okay, because I don't want to forget that there's still current violations as we speak.
I will move the recommended action on county council.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. Any oppose?
No.
Motion carries.
And then directing staff to.
Yes, and that is part of the motion too.
Oh, you said there was a follow-up line for bringing the property into compliance? Is that?
And that can be made by motion or consensus by your board as it relates to the buildings.
The ag exempt buildings, and I'm doing air quotes because they don't seem to be utilized as such. Can we give a timeframe? Well, I, I guess it's up to staff. I don't want to give staff a whole, a small timeframe at this moment in time.
I'm in agreement with that direction.
Looks like we have consensus that staff continue to deal with those buildings and try to get that rectified as soon as possible.
Well, with the revocation of the permit, like, everything cannabis needs to be removed from property, correct? Like hoop houses?
So the buildings remain unpermitted with unpermitted electrical and not, no apparent hay, walnut or tractor needs. So we would be happy to take a look at where we go from here. There are some implications. I anticipate this will end up in Superior Court and so I'll, I'll consult with county council to see what options we do have and then work with the property owners.
Okay, I think.
And is there a, a current cannabis crop?
We have not performed an annual site monitoring visit this year.
There's not anything this year? Anything grow?
No.
Okay.
It looks like you have consensus.
But removal of the buildings will be our last.
At this moment, we're, we're done. If you want to speak after the fact, that would be great.
I just request a transcript.
No, 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 no.
Removal of the.
You can request that after.
Buildings will be our last option. We'll see how we can get them permitted.
Okay, thank you very much. Looks like you have consensus to continue that work and this concludes this item. If the board, and please, if you can sit down, again, you can ask for things after the fact when we're.
It's on the record request. I apologize Supervisor Spatia, my request is to have a, a transcript of these proceedings for purposes of the appeal.
That could have been done when you had the chance to speak.
This is appropriate to do right now. There's no violation of any ordinance or local rule from requesting a transcript for purposes of appeal. I'm requesting a transcript, there's a video proceeding, I can request a video.
Request done, thank you.
Okay, when can I, when can I have the?
Administrative records, including transcripts requests can be made through the administrative office and they can assess fees through that, so.
It would be really nice if you can ask permission to speak rather than just speaking. I mean, it, it creates a little bit of a, a bad situation here and I don't, I don't appreciate that. We'll give you what is needed and what is rightfully allowed to give you absolutely one hundred percent, but this is just, we're done at this point, so please sit down.
Mr. Chair, CAO.
Please.
Yes, we generally do not do verbatim transcripts if that's what he's requesting. We can provide him the audio and then he can obtain those services, but we only complete action minutes and admin.
And again, staff is available if there are questions.
Videos on Granicus.
And videos on Granicus, YouTube, Facebook, it's in many, many different places. We have one more item that I just want to make sure we can just conclude so we can be done with our meeting rather than going to lunch and coming back for a five-minute item. And that's item, and I apologize, Director Turner, five point four. I'll read it slow as we try to get our.
Our chief building official was waiting for my signal, so I, I just sent that signal. If we could just give him a moment.
Let's go ahead and take a five-minute break and then we'll come back. And this should not be longer than five, ten minutes for this item, I do not believe. Yes, five minutes. All right, welcome back. We're going to move on to our last item, five point four, approved First Amendment of Agreement between the County of Lake and OpenGov Inc. to increase compensation by fourteen thousand four hundred and five dollars for total compensation not to exceed four hundred seventy-nine thousand six hundred and fifty-five dollars for software services and authorize the chair to sign. Director Turner.
Thank you. We are happy to talk about this item because OpenGov has been doing some great stuff, getting our electronic permitting system as well as our public portal designed, customized and useful for not just our staff, but also for the public. So I have Chief Building Official Bill Collins here to address your questions.
So the questions that I had was in the memo, it states that it was to help with, I'm looking for the term, to match other jurisdictions currently implemented configuration. And that was very confusing to me and so I emailed you and asked for clarification and what I got did not match what was on the memo. So I wanted to make, to clarify what exactly is this for so that the public and the board can be made aware as to what this request is. I also had a question about, it says here estimated cost is four hundred seventy-nine thousand six hundred and fifty-five, but it says amount budgeted is four hundred and sixty-five thousand and I felt there needed to be an explanation as to where's the fourteen thousand four hundred and five coming from in order to match above what's budgeted for this. And then I also wanted to, my last part is more of a comment. It says in here. It says in here that, uh, I'll just paraphrase, that OpenGov said it would be easy to add these things in there, and it seems to be more difficult because of the way that our master fee schedule is. And I'm concerned about potential future costs when we make new changes, new types that we're going to continuously have to request for OpenGov to come in, to pay them, to create these things. I want us to have better knowledge and better training, and maybe it's possible to renegotiate more training. I don't know. I've done that before with software implementation to say, hey, we're about to spend more money because you trained us and we're not quite sure how to do this. So just wanted to put it out there just because I don't want us to see, I don't want to, we came from Exela where we spent a lot of money and did not really get much out of it, and I want to make sure we're getting everything that we were told we would get with the contract that we got from OpenGov. So I'll, I'll open it up with that and looking forward to hearing the response.
I'll start with your last comment first about the, about the difficulties. So what happened was we were, we were told at the beginning that we were going to get four different permit types. Basically, it'd be a residential permit, a commercial, an accessory, and the solar app permit, and that we could clone these permits and create our own other permits that we need for the system to work the way we wanted to. I think what she meant by, in her staff report, is by what other jurisdictions have is, is I'm good friends with Benicia, they have OpenGov as well. They were the first ones around this area to take OpenGov. So I had a meeting with their staff software analyst, trying to help us out, understand what we need to do to build ours, along with the training we've been taking from OpenGov. When we got into it, I tried to build a, a couple permits, clone them, what they had there and try to build them. And it's, it's complicated when you're first taking it from, what they did is they kind of dropped Benicia's stuff into our system and said that we could take theirs as like a starting point and then create from there, put in our fee schedule and stuff. It's really difficult when you take somebody else's fee schedule and try to put our fee schedule in there because our fees are based a lot different than a different jurisdiction's fees. So what's going on now is we discussed this issue with us trying to build these permits out ourselves and come to the conclusion that it was better to, I, I discussed with Shannon, we discussed and came to the conclusion it was better off to have OpenGov complete the additional permit types that we need for building to be able to use the system to its peak performance and, and that it would be a lot more beneficial to us as a department and the community if we just had them go ahead and build them out and have it ready as a fully baked cake when we go live instead of us starting out with some of the stuff and some of the stuff not working like it should. So we requested a quote from OpenGov. I didn't see the numbers, but I believe it's, it was to be around $15,000, which is the number that I hear is coming through. As far as being on the fee schedule, we discussed taking that $15,000 out of some salary savings. As the board knows, I'm going to be transitioning to a new job here pretty soon. There's going to be some salary savings out of my position because I'm a top-down employee. And we're guessing that the new employee wouldn't come in at more than mid-step, so it's about a 10% salary savings there. Plus, there'll be a couple of months of recruitment, which will also give us the additional salary savings, about $12,000 a month. So we're thinking that money would definitely be plenty to cover the sal, the OpenGov costs for the, that's where we're planning on moving the money from. They come back and have been welding the record types. The, some of the stuff, for an example, is we have an express re-roof permit. So a contractor now is going to be able to get on the, get on OpenGov, well, once we go live, should be able to get on OpenGov, put in all the required documentation without a staff review, just spit out their permit, once they pay their fees and have all their documentation in there. We'll still have the capability to spot check some of this stuff, go back in, look at it, plus our inspector will be in the permit before we final it to see and make sure everything's correct in there. But the benefits to this, to the community is that they can get their permits a lot faster, a lot more ease, they don't have to come to the counter. The benefits on the county side is the savings of staff time for review. Did that answer all your questions?
I, I think it does. You explained the jurisdiction. This is more of increasing the number of types. You explained where the money comes from, and I, I personally feel that we're, we're letting OpenGov win on this one because I don't know that it says in our contract that they're just going to drop Benicia into us rather than here's what we're going to pay to get, set up Lake County. So I, I would personally say we need to go to them and tell them this is not meeting the contract. Unless it says in the contract that they're going to drop Benicia in and it doesn't work, therefore now we have to pay you to do more. They should have known who Lake County was, they should have known our master fee schedule, and the cost that they gave us in the first place should be the cost that we should hold them to. I don't want to spend money if we don't have to, but that's just my personal opinion.
I, I believe the original contract showed that we were going to get four record types and we were going to have to, it wasn't my decision, and I was kind of, thought we should get a fully baked cake, as I mentioned before. But I believe that's what the contract originally stated was building would have four permit types and that it was very easy for us to clone permits from those building types. Not necessarily that they were going to drop Benicia's in there, but we could clone from our existing four that they're going to build out for us. And then they offered to drop in Benicia's and Lake Ports and anybody else they're doing business with, which on my, my idea was a benefit to us because now the, well, the fees aren't the same. And, you know, if I take the fees from a residential building permit that's based on square footage and start dropping in some set fees for a, a re-roof that's under 25 squares or a re-roof that's over 25 squares or a re-roof with the, with the solar that you got to take off and put back on in the same location because they're getting all these, all these re-roofs that are coming due now with existing solars on them. Building out the permit, it seemed to help having Benicia's stuff in there. But like I said, the fee schedule stuff's just tough and it, it's, it's a little complex and a lot more than I thought that our, our software analyst could handle.
And, and training was part of the contract as well.
Yes, and we still are getting training from them. The, the first training, you know, we're trying to, while they're building it out, we were trying to build out some of the additional permit types so that that way we don't get to the four and then want us to go live. And now we're going live with the half-baked cake again where we can only do the certain amount of permits. I wanted the system to be, to be as beneficial to the community so we get community buy-in. Because if we change our permitting software and we tell everybody, hey, we're going to this new permitting software and it's going to benefit the community, and then it won't do half the stuff that is supposed to, all the stuff that's really going to benefit the community, we're not going to get very good buy-in. So I thought it was very beneficial to try and get it all the way set up. That's one of the reasons we've been, buildings been holding off and why code enforcement's already going is because we need to get the credit card reader set up because the same thing, you know, we're, we're trying to convince people in the county here, we have a lot of people that are used to bringing in paper plans, that are used to coming and talking to our techs, that like to call in and schedule their inspections. With Exela, you know, I built out so they could schedule their inspections online, and it's been a, it's been an uphill climb to get people to take that. They've, they've got a speed dial on there to call our department, and so then they just keep calling the department. It slows down staff time, really buries my techs first thing in the morning on, every day we're doing inspections, they get probably 20 calls in the morning. So we're trying to build out the system in a way that, that the community can see all the benefits on their side, and so they'll, they'll, they'll buy into it and use all the stuff in, and that way it'll save resources for the county versus them still just wanting to come in and drop their plans and have us sit there with the tech for an hour and a half and build their permit out when it's something that they could do from home and then our staff could spend 30 minutes on our computer side or like a re-roof permit, not even have any time in it and just give them out their permit.
Okay. Thank you very much for your responses. Any other questions or comments from board members? All right, open it up for public input. Nothing from the Zoom room, nothing from the chamber, bringing it back to the board for action.
Move to approve the First Amendment of the Agreement between the County of Lake and OpenGov Inc. to increase compensation by $14,405 for a total compensation not to exceed $479,655 for software service size. Software services and authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. And that concludes our meeting for today. Thank you, everybody, for joining us. Have a wonderful afternoon.